At this time, I will reconvene into open session. This meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for February the 8th, 2024, beginning at 6:39. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more of the trustees may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the administration building. Thank you for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, we do have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by security. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mrs. Richardson in leading us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Kids ready.
They can lead it from now on. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Before we have our program, I would like to, before we start, welcome our new superintendent, Dr. Matt Smith, who is joining us for the first time on the dais today. We want to welcome him and tell him how very happy we are that he is here. A round of applause for our new superintendent. And now, Ms. Foster, I believe we have a program.
We do indeed. President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Smith, first time saying that for tonight. This is going to be absolutely outstanding. We have the Jones Academy of Fine Arts and Dual Language. These are third through fifth grade students, and they have been working on a musical. Those of you that are here in the room with us tonight, you're going to hear this performance, and you're going to see it. But if you're online, you're only going to see it because the music is copyrighted by a very big company you've probably heard of. They're in California and Florida. There's a big mouse that is their representative. The song, if you just think about, being really, really cold. Y'all can figure this out, right? Okay, so we can't say what it is if you're online, but now you know, so you can sing along too, and all of you as well are just in for a wonderful treat. These all-stars are very exciting and bright for you tonight, and they're going to do this entire performance on their big stage over at Jones Academy on April 4th and 5th. And y'all can go to that if you want to, so you can contact Jones Academy for all the information. Tonight, we're just going to get a sneak peek of this performance, and I want to give you some shout-outs for our wonderful fine arts teachers, Amanda Renner, Shelley Smith, Amy Hart, and Sarah Diaz, who have all worked together for this performance tonight. So Jones Academy of Fine Arts and Dual Language, you guys take it away.
What an absolute treat to get to listen to them. Are we in Arlington or are we somewhere off Broadway? They were incredible. Oh, their voice is so beautiful. We'll give them time to exit. Oh, that was beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. I can't wait to go in April to hear more. Thank you, Frank. All right, we are ready for our student of the month, and that is Ms. Marlene Roddy from Martin High School. Welcome, Ms. Roddy.
Good evening, President Fowler, Dr. Smith, Board of Trustees. I'm proud to announce who our February Student of the Month for the district is, and that So let me tell you about Daniel. He's a person who is curious, creative, and disciplined. He is never afraid of trying new endeavors. He is a member of Martin STEM Academy, Martin's Choir Program. He plays varsity basketball and is a member of the National Honor Society and the Black Student Union. He plans to go to a four-year university and study visualization, which is a major that combines art and computer science. He only recently heard about this opportunity, and he hopes that this will work out for him. This major is only offered at a couple of universities, one being Texas A&amp;M, and the degree leads to a career in movie production studio. Daniel says that until he learned about this possibility, his plan was to major in architecture, and that could still be an eventuality. Daniel is a person that will not go to sleep until he has completed a project or task. He is a dedicated student who has a natural curiosity about the world. He has lots of questions and wants to know how things operate. He's not afraid of trying new things. He's willing to take on leadership roles in many of the projects assigned in his classes. Daniel sets an example for his peers and enjoys sharing his knowledge with students who are new to a program. He is a social person who loves meeting new people. Painting is a huge interest for Daniel. While always being gifted in art, it wasn't until he took an art class at Martin that the intricacies of painting became apparent to him. Daniel says that art is one of the classes he looks forward to the most, and he feels that the class is cathartic. He has taken lots of advanced placement classes and other hard classes. Through art, he finds inner peace, and it also provides challenges. He feels especially grateful to his art teacher for what he has learned. Finally, one other class that was especially important for him was his AP Physics course. Daniel said that this class helped him to learn how to apply what he learned. Every question was a new way of thinking, and one could not simply follow a pattern or process, but had to create and break down the steps for solving. Learning to think beyond memorization was invaluable for him and for future coursework and for his college aspirations. Daniel is the second child in a family with three siblings. His parents are here with him this evening, and I'm going to let him introduce his family members. Congratulations to Daniel Reddick.
All righty. Good evening, y'all. All right, this is my little brother. Oh, snap, my bad. This is my little brother, Joseph Reddick. He's a sophomore at Martin. This is my mom, Fernza Reddick. She's a teacher at Martin. And then, this is my dad, Rodney Reddick. And he works at T-Mac. And yeah, that's my family.
We are so proud that you are a student of the month. Tell me, how did you, how was it that you learned about the major that you, that you may enter?
Um, so actually, my dad exposed me to it because, because he went to A&amp;M, and I've always, I wanted to do something that like incorporated art, and I've been looking at architecture, and it was kind of interesting, like just the design aspect, but it didn't really like capture my interest. So when he told me about visualization, it was just something that was like a newer field, and I felt that it was like, that kind of like the next frontier for art, and it has a lot of room for growth and innovation, so I thought it would be pretty cool to study.
Oh my gosh, that just sounds so great. What I love is, it sounds like you're, you've got the analytic part, but you've also got the creative part.
Yeah.
And that is very unusual for people. Usually, you're, you're one or the other, but you've got them both going on, and we are so proud of you. We are so proud of you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Now, does this mean, since Dad gave you the idea, that he's probably going to get maybe part of your, your first check when you're, when you're out on your own? Is that what that means?
We'll, we'll see how.
We'll see how that goes. All right. Well, Dr. Smith and I would like to come down and give you something, so we'll be right down. If you will notice, this is the pin that I'm wearing, and if you look, every one of our trustees is wearing this pin. And it's very special, and we only give that to certain people, and you are deserving of this pin. Now, we're going to expect to see this every time I see you. I want to make sure that you're wearing that pin. All right, you got me? Okay. Well, we're so proud of you, and we look forward to all of your successes in the future. I've known your family for a while, and, and I know the good people that they are, and I'm so proud of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I've got to be honest, being here tonight for my first student of the month presentation, I can't think of a more deserving student right now. When I hear about the well-rounded education that you've gotten and how you show that, how you live it every day, every night, I don't know many teenagers that don't go to sleep just so they can finish projects, so I am just thoroughly impressed with the work that you've done at Martin High School. Congratulations on being the student of the month.
Let's get, let's get a picture. Can we get the middle? All right, Mom there? Ms. Roddy? national African-American recognition, national indigenous recognition, and rural and town, was this what you were supposed to say, Ms. Foster? Okay. And small-town recognition. And we will be honoring Lamar High and Martin High recipients this evening.
There's a phrase in the success world that says there's very little traffic at the extra mile, and nothing could be more true than looking at all of you, and I mean our students, for going the extra mile. But for every one of you with a student tonight, you went the extra mile too. So President Fowler, Dr. Smith, members of the board, this is going to be a phenomenal presentation because these are our students who stopped at nothing to achieve their dreams and to get here tonight. We're so proud of you. Before we jump into the names, I wanted to share a little bit about these awards that President Fowler mentioned. You can just tell by simply looking at the room. It's very full tonight. Dr. Smith, this is normal. But this is only half. We had to break our scholars up into two separate board meetings because we could not fit all of our students and their supporters into one room. So y'all are just the first half being recognized tonight, but you are first, so you can always say that for our presentations tonight. Two years ago, when we handed out these honors, we honored 61 students in the Arlington ISD, and we thought that was just absolutely phenomenal. Last year, we broke a district record with 141 scholars. This year, we broke that record with 150 Arlington ISD scholars. We will have all eight of our high schools represented this year too, which is amazing. But let me tell you about each one of these as we go. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships. It's available to the students who take the PSAT, and they meet all those published requirements. There are 1.3 million people who enter into this competition. About 50,000 of them qualify for the program recognition, and 16,000 nationally qualify as national semifinalists. This year, Arlington ISD is home to three of those. Yes, you can clap for that. The National African-American Recognition Program identifies outstanding African-American students, and they share information about these academically well-prepared students with colleges and universities all across the country. This year, Arlington ISD is home to 65 of these scholars. That's 21 more than last year, a new district record. The National Hispanic Recognition Program identifies our outstanding Hispanic scholars, and they share that information about those well-prepared students with colleges and universities nationwide as well. This year, Arlington ISD is home to 85 outstanding Hispanic scholars. And we have three students who are going to receive national indigenous recognition as well. And just before we get started, I want to give you just a few notable statistics. Of all of our scholars, 60% are seniors and 40% tonight are juniors, so you can, you can be back here next year with us again. 81, that's over half of our scholars, started in the Arlington ISD in pre-K or kindergarten. And don't forget, we do have free pre-K with full STEM ahead for everyone in the Arlington ISD. The top three frontrunners as far as college choices for our scholars go in this order. University of Texas. UT Arlington, I saw you, sir, I saw you. UT Arlington, yay, Mavs. And wait for it, Texas A&amp;M. You knew that was coming. As far as career choices, the top three frontrunners for future careers are biology, computer science, and engineering. Yay. And we have two brave students who are going to study journalism. You make me so proud. This evening, these students will be the first to be inducted into the Arlington ISD Wall of Fame. Don't worry, parents, you're going to get an invitation with your students to come to our Wall of Fame celebration, June 3rd. So we will send that out to y'all. A nice dinner, you'll get a penning ceremony. It's really, really nice, so we look forward to seeing all of you there. So tonight, we have two of our high schools, as I mentioned, we couldn't fit them all in the same room. Martin High School and Lamar High School are with us tonight. Principal Leslie Maroney from Lamar High School, I know it, there you are, I know you're here. Principal Maroney is going to get us started. So she's going to say a little bit about you. After everyone is introduced, you all can thank anyone that you'd like to thank in the room with you or not here with you. It's up to you how you do that. So Principal Maroney, I'm going to turn it over to you, and we'll start appreciating these wonderful scholars. Thank you.
Thank you very much. President Fowler, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Smith, we want to, first of all, thank you for this opportunity to recognize some of our amazing Lamar Vikings. Some of them, as mentioned, they have gone through elementary to high school, Spear Elementary, Pope Elementary. And so it's been great just getting to know the kids, but again, to recognize them for their hard work and dedication that has truly already paid off for them. Before I start calling their names, do know there, there are a lot of people that play a part in their success. The parents and other family members, and also the staff at Lamar High School. Many of our students are a part of the Avid program. We have our Avid coordinator, Ms. Drake, here still supporting them, so I want to recognize her, her team for supporting our kids. So let's go ahead and get started. Some of our students could not be here, but I will continue to recognize them as well. We first have Ursula Ajami. She's being recognized for the National African-American Recognition. She's a 12th grader here at Lamar High School. The colleges she plans to attend include options from Baylor University, University of North Texas, Howard University, Seattle Pacific University, Harden Simmons University, and she plans to major in one of the areas including public health, medical humanities, or pre-medicine. Come on up, Ursula Ajami. Next, next we have Max Berger. He's being recognized as a National Hispanic Recognition student. He is an 11th grader at Lamar, plans to attend either Texas Christian University or the University of Florida, and plans to major in speech pathology. Next, we have Emiliano Gutierrez Verlanga. He was just here last month as the AISD Student of the Month, and he's also part of the SLAB, but he's being recognized as the National Hispanic Recognition student. He is a senior, and as we learned last time, he plans to attend one of the top 20 colleges and universities, including UIT, MIT, Caltech, or Harvard. He plans to major in biology or government or political science. Next, we have Yasra Hassan, also being recognized for National African-American Recognition. A senior at Lamar, plans to attend the University of Texas at Arlington and major in nursing. Next, we have Janaya Jackson, who couldn't be here today unless she came in, but she's also one of our African-American Recognition students, 11th grader, and plans to attend UT Arlington or SMU and major in political science or English. Next, we have Hannah Jojim, also could not be here tonight. National African-American Recognition, senior at Lamar, plans to attend either UT Austin, Rice University, and the University of Houston, and plans to major in biology or biomedical sciences. Two other students, twins at Lamar. Khadija Oney, African-American Recognition, couldn't be here tonight, but she is a senior. She plans to major in accounting and attend either University of Texas Austin, Texas State, or Texas Tech. Her twin sister, Kalila Oney, also African-American Recognition scholar, 12th grader, plans to attend University of Texas at Austin or the University of Houston, and plans to major in neuroscience. Here, we do have Raphael Payne, who's being honored for the National Hispanic Recognition. He's a senior at Lamar High School and is involved in many other things across our campus. Here's three from his list of 14. Those include University of New Mexico, St. Edward's University, or Hendrix College, and he plans to major in sociology. Next, we have Benjamin Powers. He's being recognized for the National Hispanic Recognition. He is a senior, excuse me, 11th grader at Lamar High School, plans to attend either Texas A&amp;M University or UTA, and major in business and accounting. Next, we have Isabella Renaud. She's also a National Hispanic Recognition. She's a senior and plans to attend TCU and major in business. Next, we have Alondra Rios. Alondra is being recognized as a National Hispanic Recognition student. She is a senior and plans to attend UTA or UNT. She also plans to major in accounting. Next, we have Giovanni Sanchez, National Hispanic Recognition, a junior. He plans to attend A&amp;M, or UTA, or UT Austin, and also plans to major in business. And then we have Kamaya Shepherd. Kamaya Shepherd, she's being recognized as a National African-American Recognition scholar. She is a senior at Lamar, plans to attend either Spelman College, University of North Texas, or Harden Simmons, and plans to major in biology, or nutrition, or religious studies as a minor. And so without a doubt, we are so proud to recognize our Vikings, and thank you for your hard work and always contributing to the Viking fight never dies.
Hi, my name is Ursula Ajami, and today I'm
Hi, my name is Ursula Ajami, and today I'm here with my mom. She's right over there with the phone up waving at me. Hi, Mom. And yeah, that's it. I want to say thank you, Mom. Love you.
Hi, I'm Max Berger. I want to thank my mom today because she always supports me in everything I do, and she tells me to try my hardest, and that's why I'm here today. And if I'm down, she'll tell me to keep going and finish strong, which helps a lot. Thank you.
I'm Emiliano Gutierrez Berlanga. I'm here with my mom and my dad, and I want to thank them both for always pushing me to be the best me I can be.
I'm Yisra Hassan, and I'm here with my mom, and I want to thank my family and my mentors.
I'm Rafael Payne, and today I'd like to thank my dad and my mom who are here with me.
I'm Benjamin Powers, and I'm here with my mom today, and I want to thank her and my father for always motivating me in everything I do.
I'm Yisra Renaud, and I don't think my parents, they're over there. Thank you.
I'm Alondra Rios, and I want to thank my mom, and I want to thank my Avid teacher who has inspired me to be here, and she's one of the best teachers out there, and I mean it. She has changed a lot of people's lives, and she's the reason I actually tried in my AP classes, because the first time I went into her class, she showed me my transcript, which I had never seen, and then I was like, wow, I'm really up there, so I can be someone big.
My name's Giovanni Sanchez. Today I'm here with my family, my mom, my dad, and my sister. I'd just like to thank them for all the love and support they gave me throughout my high school and my whole career, my whole school.
Hi, I'm Kamaya Shepherd, and I'd like to thank my mom who's here tonight, and my little siblings. Thank you, guys. Love y'all.
Thank you, Vikings. I will now, at this time, turn it over to Marlene Roddy, the principal of Martin High School.
President Fowler, Dr. Smith, and Board of Trustees, I have quite a few students to introduce this evening, so I'm going to try to do it quickly, but also want to make sure I recognize each one of them in an appropriate way. I also have my counseling team here tonight. They're up there cheering our kids on. So they work tirelessly with our students, helping them to take the right courses and get them prepared for their careers in their college. And so I'd also like to note that our Avid coordinator is here this evening, she's also the mother, Daniel Reddick. So to get started, so our first, well, there's obviously three different areas that I'm recognizing this evening, and they're all mixed together, but I have some students that actually got National Merit semifinalist as well as National African American Recognition or National Hispanic Scholar, so I'll make sure I point those out, too. So we'll start with Ronag Abdarikam. He is a National African American Scholar, a recognition, he is a senior, he plans to go to A&amp;M, and he will major in biology. Some of them probably won't be here, but a lot of them are. Okay, and then I have Moiana Loahuwa Akina Kuli. She's a National African American Recognition junior. She plans to attend California State or Women's University, and she wants to go into pharmacy or pharmaceuticals. Andy Atwood is a National Merit semifinalist, he is a senior. He plans to go to Tulsa, Colorado Mines, A&amp;M, or UT, and he plans to major in engineering. Austin Boyd is a National Merit semifinalist, he is a senior. He plans to go to UTA, UT Austin, OU, UT San Antonio, or UT San Antonio, and plans to major in aerospace engineering. Emma Kayes is a National Hispanic Recognition. She is a senior. She plans to attend Southwestern University and go into early childhood education. Samuel Casas is a National Hispanic Recognition, he's a senior. He plans to attend University of Mary Harden Baylor and major in engineering or mechanical, well, mechanical engineering, there we go. Fernando Chavez is a National Hispanic Recognition senior. She's not decided yet on college, but either UTA or Texas A&amp;M, and she's still waiting to hear from UT, plans to major in engineering. Kayla Cobb is National African American Recognition, she is a senior. She plans to attend UTA, UNT, or Houston-Tolson, and she plans to major in journalism and Ruby Colan Moncato is a National Hispanic Recognition senior. She's either going to Texas Tech, Southwestern University, Tarleton University, University of Texas at Tyler, or Austin, or Arlington, one of those UTs. She plans to be a business major and maybe something else. She's not sure yet. Ty Cunningham is a National African American Recognition, he's a senior, plans to go to TCC and major in software engineering. Sophia Diarmus is National Hispanic Recognition and National Merit semifinalist. She's planning to go to UT Austin, Texas Tech, or Rhode Island School of Design, and her major would either be architecture and/or interior design. Antonio Davine is National Hispanic Recognition and National African American Recognition. He's thinking of Caltech, CMU, USC, the UCs, UTD, UT, Georgia Tech, U Michigan, or NYU. Wow. And he's planning on a double major in computer science and mathematics. Kayla Diaz is National Hispanic Recognition, she is a junior. She's thinking of UTA, Texas State University, UNT, or Sam Houston State, and plans to major in forensic science. Edie Dillard is National African American Recognition, is a junior, plans to go to Texas State, UT Austin, or University of Houston, and major in marketing. Shalom Ikayyemen is a National African American Recognition, she is a junior. She's thinking of Rice University, Brown University, John Hopkins, or UT Austin, and plans to major in computer science. Charisma Espinoza is National Hispanic Recognition, she is a junior. She plans to go to University of Texas at Austin and major in nursing. Gabriel Espinoza is National Hispanic Recognition, he is a senior. He's planning on Colby College or Duke University. His interests are robotic engineering, psychology, and chemistry. Ifulawa Fama Juro is National African American Recognition, is a junior. She plans to go to UT Austin, UT Arlington, Johns Hopkins, or Texas A&amp;M, and she's going to have a STEM major of some sort. London Franklin is National African American Recognition, she is a junior. She plans to go to Stanford, Purdue, UT Austin, University of Southern California, Colorado Boulder, or University of Michigan, Ann Arbor, plans to major in aerospace engineering Aidan Gamboa is a National Merit semifinalist, he's also a National Hispanic Recognition. He says he's likely to go to UT Austin or Texas A&amp;M, and plans to major in engineering. Samantha Garland is a National Hispanic Recognition, she is a senior. She plans to go to A&amp;M or Baylor University and major in the biomedical sciences. Catalina Gonzalez is a National Hispanic Recognition, she is a junior. She plans to go to UTA and do pre-med. Emma Grace Hairstrom is a National Hispanic Recognition. She is a junior, plans to go to Baylor University, Texas A&amp;M, University of Arkansas, or Dallas Baptist University, and plans to major in business marketing or entrepreneurship with a minor in either psychology or biblical studies. Next is Alexa Horton. She's National African American Recognition, she is a junior, plans to go to University of Texas at Austin, Hampton University, Howard University, University of Houston, and/or Rice University, hopefully just one of those, but anyway. Nursing is what she plans to do. Jared Hurtado is a National Hispanic Recognition, he is a junior. He plans to go to UTA, UNTHC, TCU, or TCC, he's pre-med. Alejandro Jimenez is planning to go to National, well, sorry, she's National Hispanic Recognition, a junior. Her goal is to go to Rice. Her others she's considering are A&amp;M, UNT, UT Southwestern. She would like to major in neurology with pre-med pathway. Abigail or Abby Crum is a National Hispanic Recognition junior. She plans to go to UNT, UTA, Rhode Island School of Design, or Rhode Island School of Design. She is a forensic biology or studio art major. Daniel Lam is National Hispanic Recognition, he is a senior. He plans to go to UT Austin, UTD, UTA, or UW, and major in computer science. Emilio Lara is National Hispanic Recognition, is a senior. He plans to go to UTA or TCC and major in engineering. David Lewis is National Merit semifinalist, he is a senior. He plans to go to UT Dallas or UT Austin and major in computer science. Ariana Lewis is National Hispanic Recognition, she is a senior. She plans to go to Texas A&amp;M, Brandeis, or Dallas Baptist University and major in biological Ryan Magetto is National African American Recognition, he is a junior. He plans to go to UT Austin, UT Dallas, or UT Arlington, and he plans to major in cybersecurity. Karen Mateo is National Hispanic Recognition, she is a senior. She plans to go to UTA or UT Austin and major in business. Preston McKissick is National African American Recognition, he is a senior. He plans to go to UNT or University of New Mexico and major in information technology. Next is Alexa Mendez. She's National Hispanic Recognition, she is a senior. She plans to go to Texas A&amp;M or University of Texas at Arlington and major in mechanical Jesus Menes is a National Merit semifinalist and National Hispanic Recognition, he is a senior. He plans to go to UNT, Texas A&amp;M, Baylor, or UT, and he plans to major in physics with a focus on astrophysics. Ihumo Mabaraki, National African American Recognition, she is a senior. She plans to go to Columbia, USC, University of Chicago, or SMU, and she would like to be in film production, anthropology, and/or art history. Darrell Miller is National African American Recognition. He plans to go to Tech, A&amp;M, Louisiana State University, or UTA, and major in electrical Next is Amina Moellen, National African American Recognition, she is a junior. She plans to go to the University of Texas at Arlington and major in computer science and engineering. Deanna Moellen is National African American Recognition, she is a senior. She plans to go to UTA and major in computer science. Next is Anahi Mungua, National Hispanic Recognition. She plans to go to Texas State and major in radiation therapy. Next is Sofia Ochoa, National Hispanic Recognition, she is a junior. She plans to go to Indiana University and major in computer science or industrial engineering. Next is Shemin Nammellin Ogubago, National African American Recognition, is a senior. He plans to go to Baylor University, Southwestern University, Texas Christian, or just or, Texas Christian University and major in biology. Next is Tammy Olajide, National African American, plans to go to University of Sydney, she is a junior, and is planning to major in business and computers. Next is Alu Waju Wanlo, Asameke, she is National African American Recognition, she is a junior. She plans to go to Baylor University and major in a medical field. Next is Valentina Pina, National Hispanic Recognition, is a senior, plans to go to UTA, UNT, Texas State, or UT Austin, and major in kinesiology. Next is Kami Pratt, National African American Recognition, she is a senior. She plans to go to the University of Oklahoma, Texas A&amp;M, the University of Texas, or the University of Georgia, and major in chemistry and/or, or, health and exercise science. Next is Caitlin Keneche, National African American Recognition, is a junior, plans to go to Northwestern University or Princeton University, major in political science or Next is Daniel Reddick. He is National African American Recognition, he is a senior. He plans to go to Texas A&amp;M or UT Austin and major in art visualization. Next is Paige Rowan, National Hispanic Recognition, she is a senior. She wants to go to TCU, OCU, SMU, there are others, but those are her top three right now, and major in vocal performance or musical theater. Next is George Roland Magaji, National African American Recognition, he is a junior, has not decided on college yet, but does know he wants to major in biochemistry or neuroscience. Next is Lauren Sanchez, National Hispanic Recognition, she is a senior. Her first choice is University of Colorado, but she's also thinking about Ole Miss or UT Austin. She plans to major in communication, she's also studying speech disorder in pathology Next is Mariah Sarhawa, National African American Recognition, she is a junior. She plans to go to Rice University or McCombs at the University of Texas at Austin Business School. She plans to major in business and, and pre-med, yes, so and pre-med. Next is Peyton Swan. She is National African American Recognition, she is a junior. Her goal is to go to Brown or Her goal is to go to Brown or Princeton. She's also got some other schools she's interested in. She's looking at UT Austin and Rutgers. She plans to major in computer science and biomedical sciences. Next, Jackson Taylor, National African American Recognition. He is a junior. He's thinking of Rice, UT, or Rose-Hulman, and plans to major in engineering. Next is Daniel Teppadino. He is National Hispanic Recognition. He is a senior. He plans to go to SMU, UT Austin, or Rice, or Dartmouth, and major in political science. Next is Itzel Terrero, National Hispanic Recognition. She is a junior. She is undecided about college or her area of study yet. Next is Sitley Vargas. She is National Hispanic Recognition. She is a senior. She plans to go to University of Texas at Arlington and major in nursing. Next is Luciana Verlade, National Hispanic Recognition. She is a senior. She plans to go to UTA or TCU and be a computer science or graphic design. Next is Lauren Vognarath, National Hispanic Recognition. She is a junior who plans to go to University of Texas at Austin, Texas A&amp;M, or Texas Tech, and major in mechanical engineering. Next is William Warren, National African American Recognition. He is a senior. He plans to go to Air Force Academy. I know that he's actually talking with them this evening. And he has other colleges he's thinking about: Hampton University, Xavier University, Texas State, and plans to major in international business and finance. And last, but certainly not least, Jamie West, National African American Recognition. She is a senior. She's accepted and plans on going to UNT and major in ethnomusicology. We're very proud of all these warriors. They're a pretty impressive group.
I would like to thank God for giving me all the opportunities to be here and to get accepted into college and also my parents, which they're right here. So I'm very glad to be here. And yeah, I mean, it was really nice seeing all the people here. And I recognize some people. Others I don't, but it's still nice.
Hi, my name's Itzel Terrero. I'm here with my mom. I would like to thank my parents for encouraging me to become the type of student that deserves this award. Thank you.
My name is Daniel Teppadino, and I would like to thank my parents for all of their support, and teachers for getting me to where I am today, and recommendations and everything else. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Peyton Swan, and I'd like to thank my family for always pushing me to do the best that I can.
All right. My name is Daniel Reddick, and I'd like to thank God for getting me here. Thank my parents for encouraging me and pushing me. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Valentina Peña, and I'd like to thank my mom, who's here with me today, for always supporting me and pushing me to be a better student.
Hi, my name is Alu Wajjwolo Asameke, and I'd like to thank my beautiful mother. Hi! My uncles, aunties, cousins, second cousins, you know, for giving me the opportunity to come to this country and really flourish.
Hi, I'm Tammy Olajide. I'm here with my parents and my brother. I'd like to thank my parents for inspiring me, Martin STEM Academy for allowing me to grow and flourish, and also Spotify for getting me through all the late-night studying I had to do.
Hi, my name is Amina Mullen. I'd like to thank my mom, who's here, and my dad, who's not here, but, all right, here you go.
My name is Jesus Menes, and I'd like to thank my parents and my two sisters who are here, and my counselor, Ms. Karen Peters, and above all, want to thank God for giving me this opportunity today.
Hi, my name is Karen Mateo, and I would like to thank my parents, and I would also like to thank my counselor, Ms. Peters, and also my accounting teacher, Mr. Thorburn, for pushing me to become the best accountant I can be.
Hello, I'm Ariana Lewis, and I want to thank my parents for being here with me tonight and supporting me. I can't wait to follow in my mom's footsteps and pursue medicine.
Hi, my name is Abby Crum. I want to thank my parents and my little brother for showing me love and support throughout high school.
Hello, my name is Jared Hurtado, and I'd like to thank my parents for pushing me to be the best that I can.
My name is Catalina Gonzalez. I would like to thank my mom because she pushed me to do, to try the best at everything I did, and my dad, because he did his best to help me with homework when I was struggling, and most importantly, God, because none of this would have been possible without him.
Hi, my name is Lennon Franklin, and I would like to thank my mom for pushing me to be dedicated and myself for sticking to my goals.
Hi, my name is Moyolua Akinkolia, and I would like to thank both of my parents and my sister, especially my dad, for pushing me to go beyond the limits and always try my hardest. I would also like to thank my counselor, Ms. Stringer, who's, I think she's not here tonight, but she has always answered my questions, no matter how busy she was, and made time to explain things to me. And most importantly, I would like to thank my teacher, Mr. Ingram, who's also not here tonight, but he has been an important and monumental figure in my life, and he has guided me in ways that I never knew I needed to be steered through.
My name's Austin Boyd. I really want to thank my family so much for being here tonight. I also want to thank my fellow students up here with me. I'd like a little bit of healthy competition, and I think that everybody up here motivates me so much, and I really appreciate that.
I'm Sam Casas. I'd just like to thank my parents and grandparents for all the support throughout the years.
Hi, my name is Fernanda Chavez, and I'd like to thank my parents for being my inspiration and motivation every day.
My name's Kayla Koffs. I want to thank my mom for recording me, and my little sister, my whole family, because they've always encouraged me, and all my Martin teachers, and also my CTC teachers. Thank y'all for letting me try every elective.
Hi, my name is Ruby Cologne, and I'd like to thank my family and my mom, who I get to spend my last semester teaching with at Webb Elementary.
Hi, my name is Sophia De Armas, and I'd like to thank my mom for always teaching me to put effort and passion into everything that I do, because that's really helped me to achieve everything so far.
I did not catch the memo about dressing up. It's my fault. I'd like to thank, I guess, everyone who helped me get here. I mean, no one in particular. I mean, everyone's important, I guess. My bad.
I'm Kayla Diaz, and I'm here tonight with my dad, and I just want to thank him for always showing up and always being there for me.
My name is Edie Dillard. I would like to thank my mom, who's back there recording me, and my dad leaned up against the wall for supporting me through anything and everything. And I would also like to thank all my teachers, past and present, for fostering an amazing learning environment for me.
Hi, my name is Shalama Hikume. I want to thank my family, my dad who's here, and especially my mom for making me go to STEM. You were right.
Hi, my name is Charisma Espinoza. I would like to thank my parents and my grandparents and my adorable baby siblings. I love them. They're my favorite people. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Gabriel Espinoza, and I want to thank my parents who are there, are back there, and my brother, and for reminding me why I do all this.
Hi, my name is Ife Olua Fomodruo, and I wanted to thank my parents and teachers for pushing me and my friends for always supporting me.
Hi, my name is Aidan Gemboa. I'd like to thank my two grandparents, one right there, one right there, and then especially my mom, to just push me to be the best person I can be all the time.
Hi, my name is Alexa Horton, and I would like to thank my family and my teachers for helping me and encouraging me to get to this point. And I would especially like to thank my mom, who's over there recording me too, and especially for just inspiring me, and hopefully I make her proud in the future.
Hi, my name is Alejandro Jimenez, and I would like to thank my parents, of course, that have always set up my own education and have instilled the importance of succeeding and a good strategy to get to the top, even if it took their entire hard work and their life, even if they couldn't get the opportunities they wanted. And I would also like to thank my brother, who won this award six years before me, so he set up healthy competition for me.
Hello, I'm Daniel, and I'd like to thank my mother, who is currently not here, my grandfather in the back, and my sister, my counselor over there in the left corner, my Lockheed mentors, and also my teachers for giving me all the potential I can possibly have.
Hello, my name is Emilio Lara. I'd like to thank my parents for saying be a good role model for me, and I realize I'm in the crowd. And yeah.
Hello, my name is Ryan Maghetto. I'd like to thank my parents for always pushing me to work hard and be the best that I can be.
My name is Preston McKissick. I want to thank my parents for believing in me more than I believe in myself. I want to thank God, and I want to thank my counselor, Ms. Peters, who puts me in all the classes I want to be in and takes me out of the ones I don't want to be in.
Hello, I'm Daryl Miller. I'd like to thank my father, my sister, and my mother. They're always there for me, always there to love on me when I need help. Thank you so much.
Hey, my name's Tim Obwagoo. I want to thank my dad over there for pushing me the extra mile, and my mom, she isn't here. I wanted to thank my counselor too, Ms. Karens, because she helps me out a lot, especially my senior year. And I wanted to take, thank my calculus teacher, Ms. Kapeski, but she wasn't able to be here. She helped me get on my social show. I was not social, but now I am more social.
Hi, I'm Kami Pratt, and here with me today is my dad, my mom, and my younger brother. I'd like to thank them because they are such amazing examples for me, and they always push me to work my hardest. I'd like to thank Ms. Reddick over there because she's truly the most amazing teacher I've ever had in my life, and she's inspired me so much. I also like to thank Ms. Tucker because she's pretty cool. I haven't gotten to work with her that much because she's new, but she's doing an amazing job.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Quinichay, and my mom is right there. I'd like to thank her for always encouraging me and telling me that I can be whatever I want to. And when I was younger, I was like, okay, whatever, you know? Sure. But I feel like I'm, I can see a future for myself, and I'm ambitious because she's always pushed me to think that I can be whatever I want to, and that's true, so.
Hi, my name is Lauren Sanchez. I want to thank my mother and father, who are here tonight, but also my brother's girlfriend, Hannah. She's the hardest-working woman I know, so she always pushes me to do great things like her. And Ms. Freeland for putting up with all my schedule changes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is also Lauren. My name is Lauren Vognarath, and I would like to thank my parents, especially my mom, who's always pushed me to do my hardest, even when I don't want to get out of bed. And I'd also like to thank my counselor, Mr. Franks. If it weren't for him, I would still be at home watching anime.
Students, we are so incredibly proud of each and every one of you. You have worked so hard, and you're being recognized tonight for all of those efforts. Please continue to work hard and strive to always be the best version of yourself, and we look forward to following your successes. We are now ready for our next award, and that's the Community Powered by Possibilities Award of Appreciation. Mr. Aaron Peralos.
Good evening, President Fowler, Dr. Smith, members of the board. What an incredible evening of presentations. Did you see the parent engagement? Yeah, it's awesome. So we continue with the presentations this evening, and we get to celebrate another tremendous group of parents and parent organization. So I'd like to share about the Arlington Council of PTAs. So the Arlington Council of PTAs has supported the Arlington ISD learning community since 1954. With the mission to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children, the Arlington Council of PTAs directly supports students, parents, and teachers of Arlington ISD. The council provides information, inspiration, support, guidance, and instruction to all members of local PTAs in Arlington ISD. In supporting students, the Council of PTAs offers two $500 scholarship opportunities for graduating seniors at each high school with a PTA, and three district-wide scholarships at $500 each. In encouraging fine arts for students, who we saw brilliant representation earlier this evening, the council sponsors the local PTA Reflections Contest, where students can enter original works of visual and performing arts to the contest. I believe we have some state recognitions this year. The council supports local PTA units by providing leadership training for PTA officers, sharing best practices, and leading local PTA membership and supporting local efforts to increase PTA membership. The council supports collaboration across campuses by meeting monthly with local PTA units and members of AIS staff, me included. In this forum, local unit representatives have the opportunity to receive information about school district initiatives and collaborate with each other on PTA initiatives on their local campuses. In supporting teachers, the council's offered three $300 teacher scholarships to help teachers continue their education and enhance their craft. In addition, the council encourages teachers to become, and welcomes teachers, to become campus PTA members and supports communication efforts between parents and teachers. The council celebrates community efforts by hosting the annual Founder's Day banquet, which is in a few days, right? The celebration recognizes the work of local PTA units, parents, teachers, and students for the past 70 years, seven-zer, 70 years, 70 años. The Arlington Council, that's incredible, 70 years. The Arlington Council of PTAs has advocated for Arlington youth, provided resources for our AIS parents, and collaborated with AIS teachers and staff. They are very well and truly deserving of our Arlington ISD Powered by Possibilities Award of Appreciation, and I'd like to welcome the Vice President of the Council of PTAs this year, Miles Davis, to the podium. Hello.
Welcome, Mr. -- how are you?
Pretty good. How about yourself?
I am great. Would you like to say anything?
We just found ledgers today going back that far today, so all minutes and everything. It's pretty awesome. I would like to thank all of our students, our staff, admin, community members, everybody to make all of this possible.
Well, I want to, on behalf of the board, I want to say thank you to the AIS Council of PTAs for all you do, not only for our students, but our teachers, as well as our parents. I've been a continuous member of AIS PTA for over 18 years, and I've enjoyed every year, and I continue, I will continue to be a member. So I've seen firsthand the great work that you do in the district, and so on behalf of the entire board, I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for all you do. Tireless work, I know. You're so dedicated, and you do so much for this district, and please know how much you're appreciated.
Thank you.
Dr. Smith and I will come down and give you an award. We truly could not function in this district without the Council of PTAs, and I mean that. You all do so much work behind the scenes, and you don't often get the credit that you deserve, but please know that we know everything that you're doing, and that we could not function without the work that you do. So thank you so very much.
One of my first meetings I was able to come to here was to meet some of the people who are dedicated and volunteering their time for our students and our teachers and our system. And I truly appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. I mentioned you can feel a synergy in Arlington ISD, and a lot of it is because of the parent work that I see in front of me here today. So thank you, thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding items on this agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net. Board meeting speakers request no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any speakers that are registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have one registered speaker for agenda items.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. I would like to call Aaron Tolman. Welcome, Ms. Tolman. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speaker. Derogatory comments aimed at the individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. And you will have three minutes to speak. Ms. Forsberg will let you know when your time's up. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, honorable members of the school board and everyone here, I'm so excited. Usually I watch it at home. I am both a teacher and a parent. I have a student in Shackelford Junior High. Love it there. Um, he had a lot of bullying at his old school in another district. Thank you guys so much. And my daughter's in alternative curriculum and special ed at Bowie. We, um, I really appreciate them as well. Um, today I want to talk about the calendar and the AB schedule that we currently have at the high school and how it's affecting a lot of our programs. As our educational landscape evolves and we've gotten more dual credit and PTEC and all these other options, students are facing challenging trying to juggle the scout, the schedule between college and high school. The current AB alternative hinders the effective scheduling and time management. I propose that we revise this where Mondays and Wednesdays are A days, Tuesdays, Thursdays B days, and Fridays alternating to make sure we have both A, enough A and B days, uh, throughout the year. This also will help seniors that have an early off period so that they can schedule appointments, or if they're taking care of family, or if they're working, they can have set days that they can commit to. Consistency will foster a conductive learning environment and allow students to maintain momentum in their studies. In addition, only having one fluctuating day per week streamlined scheduling for both students, faculty, and staff. And I will tell you personally, I can't remember if it's an A or B day a lot, even today. Um, and essential not only to address these record, uh, these concerns regarding college class coordination, but also promote efficiency, clarity, flexibility within our education system. I urge the school board to consider this po, po, proposal earnestly, recognizing its potential to empower our students and enhance their academic success. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Tolman. We appreciate that. Next, we will con, consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Smith?
I thought they were shutting my microphone off already. Good evening, President Fowler, members of the board. I would like to recommend the board ratify the appointment of individuals discussed in closed session.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Ms. McMurro. Do I have a second?
I second.
A second by Mr. Will Banks. Motion carries in the affirmative.
Thank you. I want to make sure that we recognize Diana tonight. Diana, will you stand for us? There she is. This is Diana Jettis, and she comes to us, uh, to Morton Elementary School, and she has been in Arlington ID, ISD in numerous positions for a number of years, as well as in other school districts. She has a wealth of experience, including being a fourth grade bilingual teacher, second grade teacher, sixth grade math teacher, special education inclusion teacher, assistant principal, and academic dean. That wealth of experience will continue to help Arlington ISD move forward and will definitely add to Morton Elementary School. So, again, thank you for being here and investing in Arlington ISD. We're glad to invest in you as well.
Thank you so much. And you do have a wealth of knowledge. We are so pleased that you're going to be here with us. Thank you so much. Next is our discussion action item A, uh, the 24-25 school calendar.
Thank you, President Fowler. Tonight, I'd like to welcome Dr. Hill up to bring a revision to the 24-25 school calendar for the board's consideration. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Greetings, uh, President Fowler and board members. We're here to, uh, again, discuss the 24-25 school calendar and have a couple of slides, and then we'll have a recommendation and see what questions you may have. So, a little background that we're all aware of, uh, the calendar committee met over the past, uh, late spring, some, late fall semester to consider, uh, the calendar for the 24-25 school year. We made two, uh, presentations to the board to, of the proposed calendar, and ultimately the board approved the calendar, uh, late in this past fall, based on the previous calendars and the information that we knew at that time. After we approved our calendar, a Terrance County College, who's a big partner of ours, and you'll see it in a minute, they approved their calendar and their spring break, uh, did not align with ours. And so, that's the reason that we're here today. The, uh, spring break not aligning definitely has a, has an impact on, uh, our students and our PTEC programs at four of our high schools and the two collegiate high schools. Uh, as it is, our, uh, calendar, our calendar has spring break on the second full week in March. Uh, TCC has theirs on the third full week in March. And so, because of the, that good partnership and the alignment and the impact that it will have on the students enrolled in those dual credit programs, uh, we recommend that the board, uh, change our spring break for next year to align with TCC's, to make that the third full week in March. Uh, and you'll see the two calendars here that are revised, one showing the current spring break and one showing the proposed spring break. Uh, we wanted to really honor the work of the calendar committee, and so, Aaron Peralis, who, uh, led that work this past fall, has, uh, kind of polled the calendar committee. And while they had some very good questions about, you know, the recommended change, uh, ultimately, they were in support of this recommendation to the board. And so, that being said, that's our recommendation, and we'd like to take any questions if you have any.
Dr. Hill, if I could ask, who, who comprises the calendar committee?
So, the calendar committee is, is composed of, of parents of the community, uh, community members, uh, students, uh, campus leadership, and, uh, the central office leadership as more of a guide or just a, a, more of a resource to the committee, so.
I love that. I love that we're including so many different people with different views and, and different thoughts about the process. So, I appreciate the, the different people that are on that committee. Do I have any, do I have any, uh, trustees ready to speak? My list is not going up. There we go. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler, and thank you, Dr. Hill. One question I have is, how many, or do we have a lot of parents that, uh, or teachers that work here that may have students in, uh, surrounding districts that had the third week, such as Fort Worth, or Kennedale, or Mansfield, or, or, uh, students and/or spouses?
I don't know that the number of employees or students that actually, that impacts. I do know that those other districts, many of the ones that you just named, have moved their spring break to that third week as well, to that third full week in March.
Okay. Yeah, the, the feedback I received was there are a number of either employees here, um, that send their, who live in, in those areas, and this has caused a little bit of concern on their part. But the biggest reason, you hit the nail on the head, the, we're so embedded with TCC and with all of our PTEC programs and our dual credit in our two high schools where those students actually take classes, I don't see an option to move this. We really do need to be aligned with their calendar, so I'm all in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. Richardson?
Hi, Dr. Hill.
Hello.
Hey. Thank you for listening to us. I know we talked about this in the last meeting, and the concern was brought up of how we weren't aligning. So, I am very grateful to the fact that as a district and that as an administrator, that you and your team are able to hear that feedback and we can course correct when things come to our attention. Uh, I know that TCC has already published their calendar for, in the additional two years going forward. So, hopefully that will help us align better when our calendar committee meets.
Yes.
We will be aware of that. We won't have this issue again. I just want to tell you thank you. I think there's a lot of times that we make decisions, not we, people make decisions and they don't want to go back on it. They don't want to seem like something's wrong. I love that as a district, we can make a decision and then say, we learned new information and we're going to do better now. So, thank you for that and thank you for being flexible. Please tell the calendar committee thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Ms. McMurro?
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Thank you, President Fowler. I want to echo, um, what Mr. Will Banks and Ms. Richardson have already said. I want to thank you and the calendar committee. I know it was a quick turnaround for you to have to circle back to our calendar committee, and I appreciate you for doing that, um, with such quick turnaround time. I do also want to thank our community for hanging in there and bearing with us. We did get a lot of feedback out in the community about, um, the, the employee issue that you mentioned, but ultimately, this calendar needs to be what's best for kids and it needs to be conducive to learning, um, at every level. And our secondary level was impacted the most with our spring break being the week it was. So, if there's no more discussion, I want, I want to go ahead and make a motion. I move that the board approve the revised 2024-2025 school calendar as presented.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. I have a motion by Ms. McMurro. Do I have a second? A second by Ms. Richardson. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval of one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further, uh, further discussion? Seeing none, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So, moved.
Mr. Will Banks, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Dr. Raish. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. We now move on to our discussion item, and we have three items. Dr. Smith?
President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Michael Hill is with us once again this evening to share an update on the Tasby Policy Update 122. Dr. Hill?
We're back. Policy, everybody's favorite. Uh, we do have Tasby, uh, Policy Update 122 before us for consideration, not for consideration, but for discussion tonight. We normally bring policies for discussion in one meeting, get them out there and let them just kind of simmer with us and kind of understand the impacts, and then we'll ultimately bring them back for our recommendations for action. So, again, uh, 122 encompasses both legal and local policies and recommendations from the Texas Association of School Boards, which is our partner in all things policy. Uh, just for reminder for some of us and then just, uh, for information for others, legal policies, legal updates or changes in the law, the board doesn't have to act on them, we just have to abide by them. Uh, local policies do need board action to adopt, revise, or repeal. Uh, in Update 122, there are 121 policies, and how, how would it be that 109 of them are legal policies, just law, changes in laws, and you know, just, here we go. And then 12 of them are, are local policies for which we have, uh, have action on. Just a little bit about the review process, we've reviewed it with appropriate staff members, including the Board Covenant Committee. We looked at the legals and the local. Uh, administration is continuing to look at how all of these policies will in, impact our daily operations within the district. And, uh, we're making some, uh, recommending some revisions, uh, as necessary. Uh, just a closer look at some of the policies, uh, the legal policies, we won't go into all of them, but there are 109 of them, and they are all, uh, really related to the ever-changing legal context of governance and management. Because these policies are changes in laws, again, they are reviewed by administration and we just kind of see how they impact us and, and change as, as necessary. Some of the local policies, uh, include CSA Local, which basically, and I like this, and it formalizes what we already have in place, uh, with regard to, uh, exterior doors, uh, procedures for our instructional facilities. DC Local addresses employment of school bus drivers, which we're really having a good, good, uh, luck with in hiring right now. Uh, EHB, uh, Local, uh, addresses curriculum design, and it, it basically standardizes how we should address testing for dyslexia, uh, for students with dyslexia and other related services. EIC was one that we spent a lot of time, it addresses, uh, procedures for parents who want to elect for their child to retake a class for which that child has already received a passing grade. We do have that and, uh, occasionally happen, but we want to set in policy what to do with that. And then FEA Local kind of deals with the attendance, and basically, it excuses two absences in the junior year and two absences in the senior year for students who want to visit a professional workplace for the purpose of basically learning what, what, what that workplace is about. Basically, career exploration. Uh, FFAC deals with, uh, wellness and addresses, uh, our staff who's already been trained in, uh, basically, uh, administering opioid antagonists such as Narcan and things like that. Our nurses already meet that, that, uh, that recommendation. And FL Local basically removes the mention of accelerated learning committees as they were repealed in law. Uh, that was a law a while back about when students are struggling academically, how we can accelerate their learning. It's changed, and so, we're pulling that out of policy. So, our next steps, we'll continue to review the legal and local policies and the potential impact, make any revisions as necessary, and then we'll bring this back to a future board meeting, uh, for action. Again, we presented this to the Governance Committee and they may have some feedback or more discussions, but if not, then I'll be able to answer any questions you may have.
Do I have any trustees with questions or suggestions? Dr. Raish? Whoops. Hang on, Dr. Raish, come back.
Uh, thank you, President Fowler. Uh, thank you, Dr. Hill. Uh, policy updates are always exciting and stimulating, uh, so thank you. I, uh, was just curious, on EIC Local, uh, does that change affect what our current process or procedure is related to class ranking? Or does it stay the same, but we're just clarifying in policy what we're doing?
So, the way we have it drafted is that it would not impact class ranking at all. We actually put it out for principals. Dr. Buell, I think, led some, uh, discussions with principals about what's the best way to not have this impact that at all, so.
Very good. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Raish. Any other trustees? All right. Thank you, Dr. Hill. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we will have a discussion on the 2019 bond program update. Dr. Smith?
This is not Dr. Hill. The, I'm honored to welcome Kelly Horn here tonight. Uh, Kelly's going to be providing the board with an update on her 2019 bond projects.
Welcome, Mr. Horn.
Thank you. Good evening, President Fowler, members of the board, and Dr. Smith. And I did ask Michael if he would like to come up and, and do this for me. So, uh, no, it's, uh, you'll notice tonight as we go through this, there's a few changes. So, and I'll kind of mention those as we go along and help you through them, but I think it will provide a little bit more information than, uh, than you normally have. So, we'll start right off with this slide that you always see, right? This just gives us, it's a compass, kind of gives us an idea of where we are, uh, or where we started, and the amount of dollars that we have in each of the various areas. And I always remind you, of course, that within facilities, uh, there's a significant amount of money there, funds that support the other areas, right? So, we build gymnasiums and we build fine arts areas with facilities money. So, so while the numbers are a little bit smaller in the other areas, there, there's a great deal of support in, within facilities for those other three areas. This is where we started to change things. I visited with Ms. Darla Moss about, our CFO, about how we might make this Ms. Darla Moss about our CFO, about how we might make this a little more clear for you. And so there's an added column this time, which is to the far, far right. This is remaining. We thought this might be more helpful to you. This has not changed since our 2014 bond. And as I was looking through this earlier in the week, I thought it just might be nice for you to understand what's remaining and the difference between those two columns, available and remaining. So you've seen the budget numbers there to the far left, and then, of course, you understand encumbered means that we've committed that money, but it's not been spent yet. And then expended is just that. It's money that we've already spent. It's gone, and we can see the results of those dollars in our facilities. And then you have the available. That's the available money that has been issued, but has not been spent or encumbered at this point in time. So that number in particular has to do with our Phase Four projects that we're in the process now of getting ready to assign architects for, and then we'll begin the planning, and that money will support those projects in Phase Four primarily. And then finally, the remaining column there, or that column that says remaining, that's primarily the dollars that are in Phase Five, as we call it, or Year Five, for the categories of fine arts, technology, and transportation. So just kind of gives you a better or more clear understanding of how many dollars are there for us to allocate at this point in that available column versus what we can't allocate until we have our final issuance or subsequent issuances. And then down below, I always call it below the line, where you see the costs of issuing bonds, and then you see the interest and additional proceeds to date, giving us our total available funds to date. And this is as of December 31st. If you remember, you know, the numbers that I get, that we get, they're usually the middle of the month, so the timing doesn't allow me to have the numbers for January just yet. But anyway, I hope this is a little more clear for you. This is Phases One through Four, or Years One through Four, and I'll explain that as I go to the next slides. So for facilities, we carried this over into this slide as well. So now there's an available and remaining number there that you see, and then the pie chart also shows that. So I think this gives you a better indication of kind of where we are with our dollars. Still, a bit over 50% of our dollars in facilities are committed at this point, and as you all well know, within facilities, it can change very rapidly because, you know, we're talking about very large pay applications each month for projects like Arlington High School and the new junior high school and so forth. When those get, as I've mentioned before, into the belly of the spending, oftentimes you can be writing checks for 3.5, 4, 4.5 million dollars on a single project. So the money does tend to spend quicker. So that particular area that says expended will change drastically over the next few months as we really get into the heart of building the new junior high school, really begin working on Bailey, to a greater extent through the summer months, and the same thing with Arlington High School. So, and again, I mentioned the phases versus years. Within facilities, we use the term phase, Phase One, Two, Three, Four, and Five, because our phases tend to span multiple years, whereas in technology and fine arts and transportation, their purchases usually can occur and transpire within a one-year period of time. So that's why they use the term year, and we use the term phase. Again, our projects by phase, and I mentioned this before, we, within this group, we have our playgrounds project, which is 54 total projects, but I count them as one, essentially. So at this point, we have a very active planning stage relative to Phase Four that we're just now starting, and then you'll see how these numbers, how they calculate out amongst the phases as I show you those slides. In Phase One, we've added quite a bit to the completed column. Most notably, there's projects that we've not added there before, projects like the district-wide bottle filler project. If you remember when COVID hit, one of those things that we accelerated was going back and looking at each of the projects, each of the schools, and bringing forward just the water cooler changeout that we had planned for every campus. And so we did that in accelerated fashion. Now, all of our campuses have new, we call them EWCs, or electric water coolers, with bottle fillers throughout the campus, which is very nice. It cuts down on waste and wasted bottles, and allows the kids to bring their own bottle to refill. Then things like Johns and Ashworth, those are what we call pullout projects, that things that we bring forward if there's a need at a campus where something fails or is failing at an accelerated rate beyond what we planned for in the bond, we can reach out into later phases for those projects and bring those projects forward and complete those a bit earlier. So that's what you see when you look at projects like the chiller replacement at Diddo and those courtyard concrete replacements at Ashworth and Johns. Closeout projects in Phase One, we're very excited about those, right? You've all been to those projects now, Webb, Berry, and Thornton in particular, and those projects are, for the most part, finished now. We're just doing paperwork, and we'll have those before the superintendent in short order to close those out and finalize payments on those. And then, we, of course, you all know about Glaspy and Martin. Those are just now kind of, they're in the stages of really clearing the ground, removing what we need to to make way for the new stadium, and then also to add our new fine arts addition at Martin. And then two new adds this time around, the softball fields at Bowie and Seguin, and I'll show you a picture of one of our softball fields a little bit later in the presentation. But the reason why those are brought forward is those two projects, or those two schools were later in the bond. They were in Phase Five, and we liked the playgrounds. One of our charges was to bring those softball fields up early into the bond project so that the girls could have softball games at their home campus, just like the boys do with baseball. And so I'll show you a picture and a bit of the completed softball field at Arlington High, and you'll have a really good idea of what all the other five will look like, because they'll all be exactly the same. Just one more little nod to those three schools, because they'll probably not be in our presentation next time unless you just ask for them and you want them there. But we've seen, these are areas of Webb, pardon me, not of Webb, but of Thornton and Berry to the right and left, or left and right, and then Webb in the foreground. And so, great projects, all very unique schools. All of them were designed with the intent to fit within their neighborhood, and they were, if you remember, we talked about this, these all involved a lot of effort by students and teachers and parents on how to design these schools with architects. So it was a great project, and I'm sure that the community loves those new buildings. And then, of course, the rendering for Glaspy Field. Again, we're kind of in the very early stages, but it will really start to pick up steam, and we'll have a lot of work going on through the summer. And so it's going to be a really nice look. This is a really nice look at the new stadium, and again, Wyomon and Cravens will look very much the same when we're finished. They'll have new surfaces, and they'll have new amenities around those press boxes, around the stadium, like press boxes and bleachers and so forth. Our Phase Two projects, you can see these in action, Arlington High School. We didn't get a chance, right, with the CBOC group to go through the last CBOC meeting because of the weather, but we'll still make that available, and in this case, probably to the entire board to come and walk that so you can see what it's like to walk through a construction site, an active construction site, and to kind of just see what's really going on at Arlington High. You can see a lot of great work from the street, and I'll show you again a little bit more, or remind you about our renderings of the building and what it looks like in the comparison of the two. Those four projects that are to the left, Atherton, Foster, and Johns will move over into construction phase rather quickly. Wyomon will stay where it's at for a bit longer. We are working with Coach White in the athletic department to schedule or to fine tune the schedule for Wyomon and Cravens, because we can't take those two facilities offline until we are sure that we're going to have the Glaspy Field back online. And so, and there's kind of a trigger point there, where we really have to make sure that we wait just long enough, but then start early enough that we don't delay those two projects, Wyomon and Cravens. So we'll talk more about those in future presentations, but Wyomon may sit there a little longer by itself in that column, but we'll get it moved over and into construction soon. The other projects there, Bailey, you can see when you're driving down the road, and there's a lot of really cool activity at Bailey. And for those that have struggled finding parking at Bailey at times, you can see the new parking lot from Bowen and how much space they have. So one of the questions you asked before was, are we losing parking space at Bailey? And in actuality, we're going to gain significantly there, because we can park everyone on that Bowen Street side right now, and we're still going to have that, what we call the front door in the future, but it will be a lot more efficient. So Bailey will enjoy a lot more parking, and I'm sure the neighbors will appreciate that, too, right? Of course, Sam Houston, it's kind of a quiet project. Most of that's because a lot of the work is interior, and we think of, you know, Wyomon as Sam Houston, too, right? But they are separate projects, but there's a lot of interior work going on at Sam Houston. It's not the glamorous stuff, right, not an addition or anything like that. But they're going to enjoy a lot, a lot of updated finishes on the interior as we move along. And then Duff and South Davis, I'll show you a little bit about Duff in a bit, but both those projects are going on hard and fast now. And of course, Adams and Hale are in closeout. So I promised you some look, and thanks to, I can't remember who on the board asked me to do this, I think it was Ms. McMorrow, but we worked really hard this week to try to bring some of these photos in for you so you could see, again, the renderings of Arlington High. This is a look from Cooper, if you will, looking back to the west at what the new front door will look like. Your library is right dead in the middle of that, where the flags are. Immediately to the right of that is the new front office in that three-story structure. And if you look to the left of the library, the centerpiece there, that large structure is actually classrooms, but it's also the storm shelter. So there'll be a storm shelter on that facility that will house the entire population of students. And then, of course, this is kind of looking the familiar side of the campus, right, that we always were accustomed to, the front door, what we call the front door. That's really going to be the entry to the auditorium primarily now, that you see there. And then to that bit large block to the left, of course, is the new addition. The administration portion of that is on the first floor, and then the second two floors, in this case, are both science, are all science classrooms. There'll be eight science classrooms, four on either level right there looking out those windows. So, and then we talked about this at CBOC at our last meeting. The one really nice feature about all of this, besides the fact that we have this really large addition that's going to bring a lot of newness to the campus and a new look to the front door, and I believe really energize that corner. But there's the first part of connecting the front of that building, deep into the building, so that the students ultimately don't have to traverse upstairs and across and downstairs to get to D and E. That's not in this phase, but remember, that's part of a master plan for us to do in the future. So this is really going to help with connecting the building and making it more functional for the students, and then hopefully in the future, we can finish it up and really make that connectivity. And then, of course, the last rendering I have for Arlington High, this is just another look just from the corner, if you will. If you were headed south on Cooper and you looked over when you were at the corner of Park Row and Cooper, that's what your look would look like at this point. So still a little familiar, but it will look like a new Arlington High School. And this is where we are today with that project. So if you just close your eyes a bit, right, and look and think back to those renderings I just showed you, I think you can see that in your mind's eye, right? So you see the large three-story addition there with the library. They're working their way out through the middle, kind of through the library. The library is the last part of the build there. So you can already see the storm shelter there to the left or in the top portion of that, which connects to the main gym. And so they've done a lot of work. This is actually, that photo's not that old, but they're really, really moving along quickly. So it changes almost hourly at this point. And I promised to look at the softball fields. That's Arlington High's new softball field, and it's, I mean, it's beautiful, actually. It's going to be a really, it's going to be a really nice part of that campus. When you're driving along Park Row, you can't see it really well right now because of the screening on the fence, but they'll be playing there this spring. And this is, again, what we'll see at every other campus, whether it's Sam Houston, Bowie, Seguin, Lamar, and so forth, right, and Martin. Martin's next up, because their project is a part of their overall renovation and addition project. And these are renderings of Duff, so I'll show you again kind of where we are today. But again, a really nice look at what you could expect from their gymnasium. And I was sharing with Dr. Smith when we were touring last week about our activity rooms, as we have at a lot of our campuses, and you all know what I'm talking about. We have the metal buildings, and, you know, you can't shoot a basketball, you know, at a goal, and you can't play volleyball. But at Duff, they're going to have the luxury of being able to do just that when it's all finished. And this is modeled after what we've done already at Jones, what we've done at Crowe and other campuses like McNutt and Peach and so forth. So the difference here is that this will be a storm shelter, just like we have at Crowe and Jones as well. And then you can see to the right, kind of an image or rendering of the library. It may look a little different, you know, in colors when it's all finished, but these are rendered with what the architect selected in the way of color scheme and floor patterns. And then, of course, the restroom renovations. Anytime we can get in and renovate restrooms and bring them up to date, it's nice, because, you know, there's just a lot, a lot of our restrooms have been, were built when the schools were built 50 or 60 years ago, and they've not changed a lot. So, and of course, that's what it looks like today as we're building the new gym addition. That's a bit old, actually. I say old, but maybe two weeks old. The walls on the gym are probably around 14 feet now, and the library looks about like it did when we toured it last week, but they're making quick work of demolishing some of the walls and the ceilings, and that will go pretty quick as well. And then a rendering, this is the rendering that we have for Bailey. I've had this in the presentation quite some time, but it's been a really small picture on the facilities page that I showed you just a moment ago. So we brought it in in full color and a large rendering for you on this slide, so you can really see kind of what that new office and 10-classroom addition at Bailey will look like. And today, that's what you see if you go out to the campus. Their kitchen addition is moving along. It's there on the left, and the administration and classroom addition, while it seems small, like I mentioned before, when you're in a space like this, in the beginning, when you're building the walls, the exterior walls, it feels really small, and then you start putting the interior walls, and it feels big again, and it just, it kind of plays tricks on you. But I can assure you, there's 10 classrooms and an office in there, so. And then our Phase Three projects, Miller and Little will be moving over into, we'll be bringing those to you shortly for you to approve, so we can move those over into construction. Short is actually wrapping up, and we're doing a little bit of door hardware work in the campus. But I'm hoping that we can, we're talking about holding the next CBOC meeting there, so everybody can come. For those of you on CBOC, and those who aren't, you're still welcome, and you can come and see that facility. It will astound you, the new look at Short. It doesn't look like the same old building on the inside. And then, of course, Lamar and Cravens. Cravens will, kind of like Wyomon, it'll sit there in that design column for a little longer, but we'll get it moving shortly. It's, for the most part, the designs for Cravens and Wyomon are complete. So Amos and Goodman, we'll be bringing those, we'll be bidding those shortly, and Lamar as well, and we'll move those along. They'll start to gather steam and be working this summer, hopefully. And then, of course, the rendering of our junior high school, our new junior high school, the replacement for Carter Junior High. This is, just a reminder, this is on the site that was the Knox Elementary School site, which was previously Ferguson, for those that might remember those days. And that's what it looks like today. They have, the drilling rigs you see there in the picture are long gone. All the drilling for the piers is complete, and so that project will really, really start to gather steam, and we'll see concrete going down, foundations going down, and before we get to the summer, we should see red iron going up, so, as we call it. Just one more look back at our playgrounds. We finished these projects, and Mr. Parkos and his team are working quickly now to close these out and finish our obligation to pay all of our contractors, but the project is going really good, and all the playgrounds are in, including Cooking. If you drive by Cooking, they don't have two large playgrounds like the others, because it's just one small population, right? But we did keep and modify the playgrounds that they have in the trees for them with some of the instruments and things like that that little ones would really enjoy. So they still have two playground systems and swing sets, but it's a little modified, right? And I mentioned Short, this is what Short looks like on the inside. If you remember walking in, of course, it just didn't look like that, right? The ceiling's just like Crowe. We've been able to replace all the ceilings, all the lightings, LED lighting throughout now, the nice wall coverings that you see there on the cafeteria going, or the corridor going down to the cafeteria. It's just a different school, and I think you'll be very impressed with it when you see it. Our Phase Four projects, these have kind of sat here for a while, but we're winding up the negotiations with the architects that we'll be bringing to you soon. Hopefully in March, we can bring that to you so you can approve those, and we can move forward with those projects. The reason, again, why the service center is where it's had over in design is you've already approved that one, brought that early to you. We needed to move that forward so that we can begin to design and develop and get that role we can begin to, to design and develop and get that rolling and build our command center. Uh, the command center wa- is, is most important for us from an infrastructure standpoint, but it's also necessary, this is gonna be a nice new building for, as we mentioned at the last meeting, for our transportation and our security teams. Uh, they'll have a nice, large meeting center here, uh, new restrooms, uh, they'll have an in, an indoor dispatch, key dispatch window, all things that we talked about at the last meeting. Uh, and we've now had, uh, probably three to four meetings on this, so it'll move quickly. Um, Corrigan is our architect on this project and, uh, they've done, they've also completed for us the Food Nutrition Service Center. Uh, so you can, you have an idea of their work and what, what that facility will look like when they're done. And then finally, our Phase Five projects, we're actually going to be bringing this one to you hopefully before the summer's out, the architect selection, because we'll accelerate a lot of these projects into, uh, and right along with our Phase Four. That's an effort, if you remember, relative to the realignment program, to try to accelerate these projects and gain back some time. Believe it or not, we've already started a lot of these projects, uh, but we've done it in-house. We've contracted a lot of the work ourselves. When we can replace a chiller, like I mentioned with Ditto earlier, or if I can replace, uh, and put a new key system on a campus because a lot of these projects have very small amounts of work. So, uh, where it's possible that we can do that contracting, our gen- be the general contractor ourselves, uh, or we can, we don't have a lot of detailed design work, we can bring those in-house, do those with our pe- with our people. We have a staff architect on, on our staff. Richard, um, does a great job for us. And, and Mike, of course, uh, and his team, they can manage those projects well. And we can accelerate some of these, uh, so that they don't have to wait longer. So, we're doing that. That also saves us money. We don't have to pay architect fees and we don't have to pay fees to our contractors. So, uh, again, we're always proud of this. We, we've, we've done really well with our hub participation. Uh, this, we're sitting right above twenty, twenty-six percent, almost twenty-seven percent commitment at this, at this point of participation. Our commitment is just over twenty-five. Um, so, your, your target for us is twenty. And we've, and internally, we're targeting thirty. We're trying. I don't know that we'll get thirty, but we're gonna push really hard to see if we can make that happen. Uh, to take you back to 2014, if you remember, we finished quite low. Uh, we were, we were in the teens, the low teens. But, uh, but we've changed a lot of our practices and our marketing approach to, to, to make sure that we're bringing in those underutilized businesses. And, and, and a lot of that's local business, too. So, uh, so we're quite proud of that number. And with this, I, 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 in, in the future, I'll invite, uh, Dr. Hill or Christopher Anderson to come up and speak to this. Uh, but tonight, since I've made some of the changes, I'll, I'll go ahead and continue. Uh, if you have questions, oh, Dr. Hill will be available to help me with answering anything you might have that's specific, right? And, uh, but, um, you can see, they're, they're doing quite well with their expenditures. They've spent, uh, over fifty percent of their money. When you add in the encumbered, they're over, uh, they're sixty-nine, almost seventy percent spent, which is good for this point. Uh, so they're, they've really accelerated and they're doing great, a very good job of, of getting purchases made and staying on track. And so, but there's still about ten percent available for Dr. Anderson and the team to do what they need to the rest of the year. And then we'll make available, uh, hopefully later in the year, we, we'll make some more money available for them to finish their year five. And then in safety, security and technology, I did invite Dr. Upchurch to come up if he would like to and give you a brief update on where he is with some of his projects to date. So, I'll yield the podium to him for a moment.
Good evening, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Smith. Um, I'd like to, I'm pleased to give you an update on any of the technology stuff that you'd like to hear about and answer any questions where there, when we're done. And I'm very pleased our, our community funded us so well for this. It's, it's, uh, amazing what we've been able to do. Um, one of the key things that we were able to get done is, of course, we, we had COVID and, and that happened and we had to get a whole bunch of devices out to the students. And so, we were able to accelerate our, our bond projects for device replacement and actually move to a one-to-one standard. So, formerly, we were on a two-to-one standard. We had planned to replace all those devices, but we accelerated that and then doubled it to a, a one-to-one. And so, at this point in time, we've replaced all the devices on the campuses. Uh, we're at a full one-to-one with additional capacity so that there's a little bit, you know, plus ten percent per campus so they can, uh, move things around for testing. Another, a key project we were able to complete is, uh, we were able to put in a private fiber network. Uh, many of you were at the, uh, the kickoff for that project and that was completed by the start of school year this year. And that's fully in place and up and running and we're really proud of that. Uh, we, we basically completed eighty-two sites with a, a bi-directional clover-shaped, uh, multi-ring topology. And that means that we have two paths coming out of each building and, and basically down a different street or in a different direction, which gives us more resiliency than we had before. So, you know, on the occasion when we have some construction, they dig up one of our fibers, it's, it's not gonna matter, it's just gonna go out the other side. Uh, so we're really, really pleased with that as well. Uh, we were able to also accelerate, uh, the, on the, on this technology, security side, we're able to, uh, accelerate our door access controls, our physical access controls and get done within four years what we had planned to do in five years. So, all the, uh, you know, at a one-to-one replacement, all of those, uh, all that aging equipment has been replaced with new equipment. And on the camera side, uh, our surveillance camera side, we've been able to replace nearly all the, uh, cameras in the district by this point. Uh, we, we have a few sites left, some of the high schools. Uh, but most of the instructional facilities have now been replaced, uh, with their, with their camera, uh, technology. And a, a couple of key, uh, key ones here, uh, this also includes the, uh, the, all the instructional staff devices. So, uh, at the beginning of this year, we did the final nine hundred, uh, staff devices. So, that is now complete for, uh, campus, uh, campus staff. Uh, we continue to, uh, provide refresh equipment for both projectors, uh, other administrative staff computers, uh, and, and additional, uh, security, uh, security devices. Uh, we've completed PA system replacements. Um, we've got a number of other things in, in-flight, uh, projectors or something we're taking a look at. Uh, and we were also able to, uh, add a, uh, a, a call manager system to our, uh, technical service team. When you call on the phone, now we know how many calls we're getting. We're able to generate metrics on that. And just as a side, we, uh, first week of school, we had fifteen hundred calls. Uh, and for the month of August, we had fifty-five hundred calls. So, we were very busy with that system. We're able to now synchronize those calls to our ticket management system. And we're able to, you know, pull the user up when they call us. We can see who it is and what are their existing issues. So, we've been able to do a lot of, uh, great things so far in the bond. Um, and I, I guess I'm here to take any additional questions you might have about the technology.
Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler. And Dr. Upchurch, thanks for the update. I'm great, great to hear that with all the dependency on the internet and how much it's used every day in every single class, classroom across the district, we now have redundancy and resiliency for just those kinda scenarios you, you mentioned. Um, I am curious on the one-to-one, uh, where we were in the past. We had a mix of Chromebooks, iPads, laptops, uh, et cetera. Have we, or, you know, learning from the past and as needs have shifted, has the mix of devices shifted, um, in this bond package in what you've purchased recently? Or is it still kinda the same?
It's, it's mostly the same. Uh, yes, sir. We did, uh, we did make a slight change where instead of giving second graders iPads, we have now moved to Chromebooks for second grade. And so far, the, the reception of that's been very positive. Uh, you know, the, the kids are better with technology than we are and so they can-
Yeah, we, they're much better than we give them credit for when they're in second grade, yes.
That's, that's the major change so far. And we also, uh, you know, tho- those devices are all now under lifecycle management. Uh, and previous to that, they were kind of, we had some things that were nine years old and that was one of the things we could do with the bond is replace stuff like that. Uh, but now everything is under a lifecycle management.
Well, speaking of resiliency, Chromebooks aren't known for being very durable. Are we seeing problems with those or have the, has the quality gotten better over the years?
Uh, the quality has gotten a lot better. Uh, we, we had a particular model that had some keyboard issues where, you know, you could pop keys off. The, the current models we're using, uh, we have a, we have Dell's and some Lenovo's and they're much more sturdy. Uh, the, the ones that we've been putting out are pretty solid. You can drop them. They're, they're pretty, they're pretty sturdy. They, uh, they can take a lot more abuse than the older, older items. Yes, sir.
It's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. McMurra?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, Dr. Upchurch, for the, um, tech update. And I, I agree, um, the one-to-one, the true one-to-one with the combination of the fiber opter- optic network district-wide, that really, again, is conducive to student learning and it's going to keep us online. And that's going to be a game changer. I'm curious, once we really reach that level full-on, especially at the secondary level, are our students going to be able to take tech home? Because I know a lot of the learning is on Canvas. I know that a lot of, a lot of, um, the research that needs to be done and all of that, not all of our students have access to a Chromebook at home. So, I was curious how close we are to that or if we're, we're getting to a place where, um, that's possible.
We're really close. Um, I'm glad you brought that up. We tried really hard to do that in this bond program. And, uh, you know, I hate to say, we, we, we hear this a lot with, you know, steel and other types of materials. The cost kind of rose on us and we actually had planned to do that. We were gonna, uh, we still, we still would like to. We're still working on ideas for that. Um, but the, a take-home program for, for high school would've been great. We were thinking, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll start providing those. Uh, we'll, we'll pick, we'll, we'll start ninth grade receiving new devices and that'll sort of roll as a cohort. Each ninth grade cohort will get a set of devices, kinda like how we do STEM and, and our collegiate programs, they get devices. And we wanted to extend that out into the, into the full high schools as well. Uh, we're still, we're still looking at that. Uh, we, there's some remaining, uh, ECF funding that we might be able to take advantage of, uh, for, for a take-home program.
Okay. That's good to hear. And I, I just, I, I, that's reassuring and I really encourage staff to pursue that. That's probably the, the number one question I get from our parents. And, um, you know, I think that even something such as a checkout program, um, with a waiting list even, if we have to start there, would be something. Um, but thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you, Ms. McMurra. Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Fowler. Uh, Mr. Upchurch, I wanted to clarify and highlight the, uh, the scope of this. Uh, we, we look at the numbers. You mentioned, uh, one-to-one for students and you've got pretty much every, uh, teacher and educator covered. I just want people to understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking north of sixty thousand pieces of equipment. Between sixty and seventy would be my guess.
We have a hundred and fifteen thousand endpoint devices that are for students in the district.
Say that number again?
Hundred and fifteen thousand.
I think that's just an important note to highlight.
Yes, for sure.
And that's not all, that's not all, like, currently in to use one-to-one. It includes everything, but that's the scale that we're operating at.
Yeah. Uh, and it's just, thank you. It, it's phenomenal, uh, to be able to offer that level of opportunity for our students. It is a tremendous undertaking. So, yes, thank you to our community. Without them, it wouldn't be possible, for sure. Uh, but thank you to you and your department to, uh, implement it, to manage it. Uh, as you said, to be able to, uh, manage the call center for, uh, employees calling in and you can see who it is and go right into their device. That's a wonderful thing. And to do it on the magnitude and scale that we're discussing is phenomenal. So, thank you for that. Uh, the only real question I have is regarding all of the opportunities that we've capitalized on for the bond, um, utilization. Uh, as far as replacement cycles, are these, uh, phased in in a staggered cycle? Or are we going to hit a cliff every so many years where we are forced to go out for a bond or dip out of, uh, uh, extra funds? Or what's that look like?
Yes, sir. We, we do have a bit of a challenge with, uh, you know, we call it the COVID bubble. Um, we had to replace twenty-four thousand devices that year.
Right.
Uh, we, uh, we, we were very fortunate that we received, uh, money from the state and from the federal government, uh, T Act funds and, and ECF and E-rate funds. Uh, but that did create a, a kind of a, a bubble in the snake, so if you will, uh, that, that we've been looking at kind of smoothing out on, on the far end with, um, adopting devices. Our, our last round of Chromebooks, for example, were, uh, seven-year, uh, supported, stable release version. Uh, so that's what we decided to do. We don't want to have to keep Chromebooks for seven years, but we decided, uh, that the team did a great job, like, how can we extend these if we have to? And we chose a model that allows for that. Um, now, you know, I think if we can, uh, if we can find options for year six, year seven, that'll help us tremendously, uh, because we, that's when they'll start falling off of their maintenance plan. So, right now, they're under five-year lifecycle, but then, you know, year five comes from the year one devices and, and we start, we start looking for replacements.
Right. Well, uh, keep us surprised on, uh, what, uh, what that looks like, uh, moving forward. Obviously, from a governance level, we need to be aware of what that looks like from your needs budgetarily. And I know it'll work through the budget process, potential bond planning, but, uh, as much advanced planning and notification that we have, the more we can all work together on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Any other questions or comments?
All right. One last slide. That's all I have. Transportation.
Thank you.
He did a great job. I'll bring him back. So, on transportation, this is a, a quick look at where transportation is on their dollars. The, there's a bit of an anomaly here in that, you know, they suffered greatly, just like Dr. Upchurch just mentioned. Uh, buses are steel. There's a lot of steel and, and there was a lot of delays in vehicles, uh, the purchase of vehicles, the purchase of buses. So, they're, they were, they were kinda set back a bit more than, uh, than maybe the rest of us. And so, but I know that, uh, Mr. Gillis and his team are working hard now to ramp back up and bring more buses back, new buses into the system. And I know for a fact, because it's, it's my team, but they're also, they're doubling up on our vehicles, uh, and bringing us back up on, uh, to, to catch us up on our white fleet vehicles, white, white fleet vehicles. And so, we're very grateful. But their available funds will, will, uh, will be absorbed rather quickly and then we'll get them back. With Dr. Hill, his, his help, they'll get them back on track as well. So, with that, uh, I'm at my question slide and I, but I, before I did, I, I wanted, I really wanted to, while he was here, I wanted to mention, um, when Aaron was here, we, if you remember, we, we moved to this building, uh, relo- relocated here. We renovated this, this, uh, structure, what we called the Enterprise Building before, to the new admin building. But it was the first of two phases, right? Uh, the first phase to bring the bulk of our administration team into this building, but we had still some folks outside of this envelope that, that we were gonna have to have a new home for. And most of those were, uh, those groups that serve families like Aaron's, um, as well as health services and, uh, the es- the student outreach, uh, services and so forth. So, there are quite a few other faci- or other folks that are not here, that are still in those annexed buildings. And, uh, I'm proud to say that, uh, you know, the facility that's at fifty-six eighteen Arkansas, at the corner of Green Oats in Arkansas, has been renovated fully. And we started moving folks into that building just two weeks ago. And Aaron's team was the first team to move in. He's the building principal there. And Student Outreach Services just moved in this week. And so, we'll continue to populate that building, uh, with all of those other folks that were in annexed buildings so that we can complete that plan that we promised you, which is to get all of our people into mainly two buildings, uh, to serve for administrative purposes. And then we'll begin to raise those other structures or sell off those properties as we go along. And so, we won't be scattered out like we were before. So, we're really excited about that. And so, hopefully, one day, we can get you out to that facility, too, and let you see what we're doing there. Thank you all, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. Uh, Mr. Horn, thanks for the presentation. It's always great to get this update because so much work is going on and, and we've been doing bond projects now at a very substantial level since 2014.
That's right.
And you can really see the transformation over the district between the nineteen bond and the fourteen bond. And speaking of the fourteen bond, we, uh, I know Mr. Will Banks and I and some other folks were on the Capital Needs Committee that put that one together.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the thought process then is that we were gonna start sort of rolling five-year bond programs and, and keep going. And of course, it's 2024.
Right.
Nineteen bond was in nineteen. We haven't called for a Capital Needs Steering Committee for a, a twenty-four bond. Uh, and, and this bond is, is not going to be completed within five years. That wasn't really the, the plan this time. But what is the early thinking on how long it will take to fully implement the nineteen bond projects and, and get through that? And then when we might be looking at the next tranche of, of bond projects for a future bond?
It, it takes, it's actually, you know, we, sometimes we look at, when we say twenty-nineteen bond, we think, well, twenty-nineteen, so let's count from that year, right? But it's twenty-nineteen, it was November when we passed, or when we passed the referendum, right? So, you really start counting in twenty-twenty. And that first year typically is, a lot of that is your design year. And then you have a year on the back end, uh, that's why they kinda call them five-to-seven year bonds, right? And on the year on the back end, even though it's not, uh, it's not that, it's not a year that you typically count in the bond. that you typically count in the bond, it's a year that you have to finish projects, right? So you're exactly right. We, initially, we had planned that by year 2024, 2020, early, before 2025, we would start assessing our facilities again and look to whether or not we would implement another bond program. We, we are still in the process of assessing. That's not changed, but, and we can, we can do that, we're very agile in that sense. We can do that very quickly. A lot of that is because, if you recall, we did a, we did more of a master plan in this, when we did 2019, where we looked at this bond and two additional. And, and so it's really more a matter of, of when we, when the community and when you, the board and superintendent would like to consider that, that opportunity to do that again, right? And so, but we can move quickly, and we'll be prepared for that if that's the case. This one, we'll see, most of our larger projects, like in Arlington High, will come online in August of 2025. And then, and then should, we hope to be done by December of 2026, the end of December, to be completely finished with all of our projects. So that's the intent. And we may, may still be doing some paperwork in that spring of '27, but, but that we're trying to accelerate, even with the lost time that we had from COVID and the supply shortages that pushed us back eight to 12 months, we're, we're working very hard to accelerate things and bring them back in line and not lose any more time.
That's good to hear. And I, one reason I asked that question, because I, I do get the question, it's like, well, when's the, when's the next bond coming? And I noticed in the Phase Two projects that I see there's some work beginning on, on South Davis, and I know South Davis was one of the campuses that we maybe had hoped, and there was some discussion of try, trying to get it into the 19-bond, but, you know, the bond can only, we can only do so much, and it, it was an incredible job, I think, to find the efficiencies that we did with, with moving pieces around, so we could get the new junior high and three elementary schools done in one bond. Because I think, early on, the discussion was, well, we might be able to get one or two of those done, and we ended up getting substantially more. And, and on that, that point, I do want to just go ahead and flag now, you know, I personally am eager to get the, the East Arlington Master Plan, you know, continuing to roll. I know, without going into the details, you're in a closed session with, with land deals and stuff, but that, you know, there was a hope that the old administration building could potentially, that property be used for New South Davis, and we could get that done in the relatively, you know, near future, and that, and that seems to be cooled, and maybe there's reasons for that. We need to reassess our, with our demographer, our enrollment patterns and things like that. But I just want to flag that I, I would really hate for South Davis to slip, because it is among, if not the remaining, besides, like, oldest structure that we have kids in. And at South Davis in particular, we have a substantial number of our students who are, i, i, their entire educational experience is pretty much outside, because we, so they're only campuses where we still have what I would call a temporary city. And it's been that way for a while, and it's one of our larger elementaries. And I worry, and if there's an appetite for some smaller bond at some point, instead of another big 14, 19-level bond, to get that done, I personally would be interested in seeing that, because if we continue to go, if we wait until 19's done, the capital needs for a future bond, and then get South Davis in that, and then the planning and design, you know, from when the discussions we had about replacing South Davis back in 18, you know, we're now looking at 10, 12 years down the road before those folks over there are getting a new, a new campus. And, and, you know, I know we're a big institution and things move slowly, but I have a particular sense of urgency about, about that campus, because the facility there, while structurally sound and everything, is, is very 1952.
Right.
And plus, we have, not to insult anyone who was born around that, that time period, but it, it is, it is, if you go to South Davis and you spend time at South Davis, it is substantially out of step with the, the facilities that we have. And, and I, like I said, I'm, I'm eager to, to see that continue.
Sure.
That is the only question and thought that I have. Thank you.
And to your, to your point about South Davis, it is, it is the very next school in that list of schools that we talked about is, in the master plan to, to replace. And part of our bond, part of the 2019 bond, was future design fees that we would use to, to get a jump on a design for a new school like South, or a replacement school like South Davis. So we, we have a little bit of a contingency built into this bond to allow us to, to get a jump on it, just as we did with Gunn and with Crow. So that was a little bit different. We, we used funds again in the, in the back end of 2014 for those campuses, but we have a plan to get, to get design started on a school like that, with the intention that we might have the, the fortune to be able to, to replace it and do it quickly, with, you know, right on the back end of this.
Okay. So I appreciate that. Thanks, Mr. Horn.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. Ms. Richardson?
Thank you, President Fowler.
I'm looking at, on page 10, when we're looking at our facilities, we see that we have a new junior high rendering.
Yes.
And when you look at it, it says New Arlington Junior High.
Yes.
This is going to be what was formerly known as Carter?
That's correct.
So where are we in the process with the name of that school? Is it going to remain Carter? Are we soliciting new names? What process are we in right now?
It's my understanding that names have, have been being submitted for consideration. I, I've not been involved in that detail, so I would have to rely on others who might have more information.
Yes, I think, from my understanding, we've been soliciting names for a while. We began talking about it with the Governance Committee, and we will be talking about it with the whole board in a meeting in the future.
Perfect. Okay. My second question would be with Dr. Hill. Hi, we missed you. Would you come back up? We haven't really seen you lately. In our last meeting that we had, Transportation Department was there, quite a few of our employees, and one of the things they expressed concerns about was that when they are using their facility, they are having to walk outside to go use the restrooms. Have we been able to address that concern that during weather, during rain, that they're outside in the elements? Is there anything being done for those concerns?
Yeah, so to, as to that, we actually, Kelly and I, visited that facility the very next day, and we looked inside and outside, and he's doing some interior maintenance, if you will, small renovations to that break room. And then we've also talked about what the feasibility of, of putting some sort of covered walkway. The challenge is, we still have to drive buses through there, and so when you, when you put a walkway, covered walkway so high to get a bus through, then it almost defeats the purpose, because you're not protected from the elements. But we're looking at the feasibility of that.
Okay. Thank you very, it's important to me that when they come and they spend their time, especially when they sit through one of our long meetings, that they're, they understand that not only did we hear them, but that y'all go out and take that action. So knowing that you went the very next day and followed up, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Quick question about the softball fields. I know that we have Bowie and Seguin on deck, and then other high schools. Are they all going to have the same type of lighting system, and can you give us a quick summary of the scopes there?
Certainly, yes. When we began the process of, of the new field that is Glaspie, part of that was, part of that process was going through the plan development phase with the city, and we were working with them to help them understand how LED lighting would benefit our students and our fields, right, the use of our fields, but not cause light pollution in the neighborhoods and spill out into the community, right? And so when we, we went through that process, and we were able to convince the city and planning and zoning that this would be beneficial and would not impact our neighbors like our old lighting systems have in the past, that really kind of set the stage for them to allow us to consider other facilities. So even like we had planned, if you remember back in the 2014 bond, we planned to do the junior high fields, but we couldn't. They, we just couldn't get the lighting through the P&amp;Z Committee and through city. But now we have the lighting going in at the new replacement junior high for, for the Carter Junior High School, so that, that'll, that'll be a neighborhood school. We actually have bought the poles for the Arlington High softball field. All the infrastructure's in place. We're now pushing that through the city for permitting, but we didn't do that initially with that, with that particular project, because we hadn't finished Glaspie, and we hadn't gained that momentum. Now the city's agree, agreeable to, to consider this, just like we have at Martin, Martin, the softball field at Martin will have lighting, new LED lighting. So the intent is to do just that, is to, now we're going to take, to step back and, and request permission to put the lights in at Arlington High, and then we'll go campus to campus. We may have a hurdle here or two with, with the campus, if it's extremely close to, to the neighbors or so, but I feel like with, with what we've proven so far about the new lighting systems, that we'll be successful. So our intent is to have LED lighting at every softball field, and then LED lighting at all of our, all of our feet, all of our athletic football fields in the future. That's where we're going.
Okay, great. And the only other thing I, I just wanted to share, I can't remember if I told you this last time, but we can't have a bond presentation without giving kudos to all of the new playgrounds. And my son, who's a fourth grader, J.B. Little, he described his, he, they're in Phase Three, so they were one of the final ones, and he described the new playground as fun as Six Flags. That is no joke. And it's the spinny ride that did it for him. And something else that he said to me more recently was, he noticed that everyone can play on everything.
That's right.
And that is what is so special about our new playground, playgrounds. Thank you. I also don't miss those rocks in his shoes.
Me either, me either. We spend a lot of money and time make grooming those rocks all the time, so yeah.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Mr. Wilbanks?
Thank you, President Fowler. First off, I have got a few questions for you, but I do want to ask, who's responsible for the new website, and when did it go live?
It's been live for quite some time, but Ryan Pierce, who works in communications, he's extraordinary.
The usability of that site to get answers quickly is incredible. So kudos to Ryan. I figured he was the mastermind.
He, he is, it's every, all the credit goes to him, right, right, Anita? Oh, well, it'll be a race now to see whether Anita gets to tell him or I do, but Ryan's amazing. I, I, I just can't thank him enough.
Yeah, definitely. Going back to transportation, let's start there. Well, first of all, I also want to say, I share the same sentiments as my colleague, Mr. Ch, Mr. Choppa, on the need to maybe not do a big bond package, but start thinking about those, especially elementary schools that have been around since the 50s. Maybe we don't need to touch the ones like in the 60s from my era, but, but definitely the 50s. And I know we had a master plan.
We do, yes.
I know we're kind of delayed because of, you know, the eight, as you said, eight to 12 months delay because of COVID, but we really do need, we've got a lot of elementary schools that are aging beyond their useful life, or have already aged past their useful life. So I think it's about time we, we as a board and start thinking about what's optimal going forward in, in terms of not losing momentum, and also being good stewards over taxpayer dollars in terms of what makes sense, in terms of how we phase those out going forward. So I'd be all in favor of that.
Okay.
So now, a question about transportation.
Yes, sir.
So on your transportation slide, you alluded to the issues we face with the inflation that we've seen recently, especially the big heavy steel, which is still a pernicious issue that's continued. My general comments on where we were with our original scope in terms of the number of buses that we're going to try to replace with this, has that shrunk as we're kind of having to deal with the constraints of the inflation that we've seen? How are we handling that from a budgetary standpoint?
So it's, I run, we actually had a meeting with Transportation and our fleet managers yesterday, and we talked about that topic. Just to leave context, when we built that bond, $90,000 would buy a bus back then. Now it's about $140,000 for a bus. And so it, if we were to say that we're going to buy 10 back then, we don't have the dollars to get 10, and so we're looking at, do we stretch the lifecycle of some of the buses? Do we rotate them in and out of the fleet with the mileage to try to keep the miles down, because we're at like 10 years, 150,000 miles, we rotate them out? Do we stretch that a little bit until we can try to figure out how we can address that issue? But we're in a good position right now. We've actually are looking at replacing some, salvaging it, buses and then bringing new ones in. But I think we're going to be at a good place, because of, we do have an efficiency study that's going on in the Transportation Department right now, looking at route efficiency, staffing efficiencies, to make sure that we can try to address and mitigate that. But it, it's a real challenge. 90 versus 150 is...
Yeah, my big concern is the fact that we've got a very intricate routing system, given that we have so many programs of choice, and it's critical that we get students from their home campuses, to CTC, or maybe that they've been accepted to the STEM Academy or this P-Tech program across town.
Yeah.
And even our elementary students that are trying to get to, you know, our programs of choice. So...
I actually shared with Dr. Smith yesterday, I believe, the, finally, Fire and Steel Language Academy, next year at Arlington High will be the first year of that, and so we've got, we've got a...
Even more routes.
More routes and transportation challenges. But I think because we're, we've been looking at this for probably about three months already, planning for next year, again, the efficiency study with the Transpar efficiency study, I think that's going to help us be a lot more efficient with our routing and our staffing.
Are they going to look at all options, for instance, routing students to Jones from, say, Southeast Arlington, or from Southwest Arlington to Jones?
Yes.
We probably don't need a big bus. We probably could use a much smaller bus or white fleet.
That's what, that, that's one of the, the options that we're actually considering for the smaller academies, is the activity buses. You may see those white, smaller buses going around the city. We may look at getting more of those, because they're more affordable, and they're more probably economic to drive in with fuel and everything else like that.
Absolutely. So, okay. We'll be curious what, so we're having a formal audit or study?
Yes, they're in the midst of that right now. It'll go probably another couple of months into the spring, and then it'll give us a basic and final recommendation or something for us to consider.
And then you're, you're going to report out to the board at that point, or go through audit or one of the committees?
Definitely. We're Dr. Smith, and however we want to get that information out, we can definitely make it available. Yes.
All right, great. Thank you, Dr. Hill.
You bet.
So Kelly, speaking of inflation, I think one area where I hope there's a bright spot is, we saw construction for lumber and other raw materials go through the roof, but then it came down pretty quick, quickly, just as precipitously as it climbed, it dropped. Is that still a bright spot going forward? Are we looking at easing up on those inflationary?
No, it's, unfortunately, you know, in construction, typically when it, when this type of thing happens, they don't go down, they don't accelerate, you know, at the same rate they were before, or they might flatten off. But it takes quite a bit, it takes a lot of other external pressures, really, if you will, to try to drive that down, competition being one, maybe a slowed economy, you know, a lot more workforce than we have projects available. I mean, it takes, it would have, it would require something like that before we would see aggressive, you know, pricing for construction projects such as ours. And right now, there's just too much school building going on, too much hospital building going on, airport building.
To the demand pressure, we're still keeping the price inside.
Yeah, and the, and the supply side, the supply chain just hasn't caught up yet entirely. Concrete's still struggling to, to meet the demands, you know, that we have, and this is, this part of the country, we're still building like, like Matt's.
So what is that, I mean, to kind of bottom-line me here, in terms of, you know, with something like transportation, when the price goes up by 60, 70, 80%, you just get less buses, or you get smaller buses. We can't get smaller buildings for things that we're already committed to.
Right.
So how has that impacted us in this bond in terms of, or, you've presented to us in the past, kind of redoing some money, we set some money aside, but where are we on coming in on budget for those projects? And did those moves, financial moves that we made previously, are those going to cover it, or are we still going to, are we still seeing some bleeding year and coming in over budget?
We're, we're doing very, very well. If you recall, as a part of the realignment program that, that you adopted, we, we kept certain projects that were critical for us, you know, like our new, the schools that we're building now, you know, the new junior high, Webb, Thornton, Berry, Bailey, the Bailey addition, the, the Fine Arts addition at Arlington High, all of those significant projects, you, you voted to keep those moving just as we had planned. And then we would realign the rest of our budgets on projects down the, down the way as we went, to, to look very closely at, at whether or not we could extend things. Do, do I, in other words, could I take a roof system that we might have, we might have intended to replace an entire roof system, but I can, I can replace a certain sections of a roof? Because all of our roofs are, are in, are built-in sections, unlike our homes, for example. And so we might take a, a section that's, that's 35 years old and replace it, and another, and the other sections might be 25, but because of the type of roof systems that we build or that we employ, I can extend those, and we can maintain those longer, and we can push those out into another maintenance bond. bond, or something of that nature. So the same sort of thing on the inside. We might, we'll look very, instead of doing ceilings throughout a building, or lighting throughout a building, we'll take and do corridors, or we'll do wings that are older, older wings, as we talked about. And a good example of that kind of thing would be a school like Rankin. You know, it'd be nice to do all of the ceilings in the building, and all the lighting at one time. But when you look at Rankin, Rankin has an entire wing that's only 20 years old, right? Or a little over 20 years old. So we would focus more on the older part of the school, and then pick that other newer wing up at a future point in time. So we've just had to, we've had to tighten our belt a little bit. And I know I used the example over and over again about going to the grocery store with $100, you know, five years ago versus going now. Our money just doesn't buy us as much as it was before. So we may not buy a Blue Bell, or we may not buy a 12-pack of cokes and a bag of chips because we have to make some hard choices. Doesn't mean we're not doing the work. We're still renovating restrooms, but we have to be very careful. And we assess those buildings, again, reassess them as we're going through them and preparing, to make sure that if there's something we can continue to, to live with for some time, it's in really good shape. But it's just, it's just older, and we had, and our wish was to try to get it all at one time. We may back off that and do what's most important. The intent, though, is to keep us in budget and continue moving forward and stay on time and in budget. And we're doing that. Where we might have a project that's over, we always, we always bring that to you. All the projects have to be approved by you in advance, right? And so whether that's a project that's slightly over budget in the beginning, or a project where there's a change order because of some unforeseen, we still bring that to you so that you understand where we're at. And we always have a plan for managing that within the budget that we have. We, the one option we don't have is, we can't overspend.
Right, right. So yeah, that's the key, is knowing, you know, as a trustee up here, is when are we over budget? And are we going to be on time?
Yes, sir.
With our projects, especially when they impact students. For instance, Arlington High, that's a lot of students that are going to matriculate up from not only the feeder patterns we have, but the, the two specialized programs that are feeding gun, and those students will matriculate into Arlington High. So right now, you've got that slated for fall of 2024.
Yes.
Is that not necessarily the beginning of the semester, the school year in, in fall of 2024, or?
It's, it's not. So it's, it's looking more like deeper into the fall, but the good thing about it is, is we're bringing up about 150 to 160 kids into Arlington High the first year. So we don't pick up the full cohort, if you will, or the full four years of students at one time. So we'll get a smaller group this first year, and then we'll double that again, and then triple that, and then quadruple that, you know, as the years go along. So there'll be a lot of classrooms at Arlington High that will remain somewhat empty for a little bit of time, while we're bringing those cohorts up one at a time from gun, from gun. And so we've, we've taken that into account. We're working with the principal as well to make sure that she has places to put the students until we can get that, that addition completely finished.
Now, so what's the confidence level on, on the kind of slightly delayed fall 24?
I think, I think we'll be, I think like with Joan, or pardon me, I said Jones, I meant to say Webb. With Webb, I think we'll be looking at a mid-year open. And that's, that's, we're, we're going to try to accelerate it and bring it back forward. But it's better to, to make it mid-year and not try to do it midsemester, right? Because it's just so disruptive.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely. I think the way we handled Webb was, was right on.
Exactly.
And I think the teachers appreciated it, and we've got one of those teachers back in the corner.
I can't say...
I think she's smiling in a good way. I don't know, we'll see. I'll ask her later.
I can't say enough about Ms. Humble, though. She's been a fantastic principal to work with on that project, and she's knee-deep into it with us, and...
Yeah, she's a good partner to work with, let me tell you. So I've worked alongside her going through Pudler and...
I forgot about that. You're right. She's your principal there.
Good person to work with. So that's all I have. I mean, just, you know, my big concern is, it's too early in the process with Carter, or the new Carter. I won't press you on, on commitments today. It's, I know better. But yeah, just ask that we do everything we can to continue to make sure that we're not disruptive, and we know sometimes schedules slip. But as soon as we can, things look like they're going to, it might slip, I'm not going to say they're going to, but might slip, the better we're informed and the better we start planning.
Yeah, that, that's, as customary, I'll make sure that Dr. Smith knows, and he can share that with you, whether we're having a presentation like this, or he's doing that with each of you separately, I'll make sure he knows.
All right, thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Dr. Rice?
Thank you, President Fowler. Mr. Horn, appreciate the information, as always. I was kind of tuckling to myself on a couple of things, your grocery store analogy and Blue Bell. Yeah, I don't buy, buy Blue Bell hardly anymore at 9.50 for a half gallon.
Isn't that the greatest thing?
It's crazy. Never even went to Haagen-Dazs. And then, isn't it great that we have the avenues available for bonds for things that were built formed in the 50s and 60s? Wish we had that for people, right?
Then that's true, yeah.
So I just wanted to point out something regarding the, the hub targets and percentages. You've mentioned how in 2014, the numbers were subpar compared to 2019 in the goals, and they were in the teens. But I think it's really important to highlight that that was amazing progress at the time. And I know you got here right after that. Right before that is when I really pushed that we needed to include hub and, and look at targets and, and scoring rubrics to increase that participation. So honestly, 2014 was a win because before that, we had a big goose egg.
Zero, you're right.
Yeah. But again, hats off to you and, and your department and the district for being so intentional on continuing to drive that growth and, and make that whole opportunity thrive. It's so very essential. So it warms my heart every time you come up here, and these numbers, just they keep edging up. Two, two final things. When we were looking at the Arlington High design a few years ago, I mentioned, kidding, not kidding, the open space that faces Park Row, that that could be something for a cult sculpture, student-staff commissioned, or something like that. Again, kidding, not kidding. Has there been any talk about anything like that, or what to do in that space that's kind of void?
Not necessarily from, from my group, because it's, the spaces in and around the schools like that really are, I mean, that's what, it's, it's there for the campus, you know, to, to add life to it as they go along, right? So when you look at some of our older campuses, you know, we see it on the inside, we see it on the outside. There are statues in some cases, there's murals and that sort of thing. So we, we don't, we try not to artificially create all of that, right? We do a little bit of it, but I take us back to Barry, when we rebuilt Barry, we brought over some of those really important elements, like the little statue, statue of the little girl that had passed away recently, for the last few years. So we try to preserve that, but, but, you know, this, this part of Arlington High is going to have a whole new identity. And so I, I think that's probably an area that they're going to want to look at and consider doing something. But we, as a facilities group, we, we try not to stymie that sort of thing. We just try to make sure that whatever we do, that it's in keeping with the intent that you all have, and that, and that it fits, if you will.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And yeah, I, I don't expect you to put on your sculptor hat and coveralls to get out there. But at least from the standpoint of, if that's maybe a thing, discuss with the principal, she can reach out to the alumni group, which is very active there. If there's any kind of a pulse that, yeah, they might be interested now or someday, from a facility standpoint, you can at least make sure, engineering-wise, structurally, lighting, power, accessibility, et cetera, that that stuff's included.
I think, I think that's the good thing about that particular design, is it's, it's ready, kind of, it's, it was meant to be kind of an outdoor space outside those, those library windows?
Yeah.
For this type of thing, whether it's benches, or whether it's benches and a sculpture, or a garden, or anything, it could, it could host a lot of different things.
Yep, yep.
Absolutely.
Thank you. The final thing is, out of the remaining projects, which ones would be ripe for board ad hoc committees to participate in, like we have in the past with various facilities? Mostly, I think it's been new builds versus renovations. But is there, are there any that you can think of that might require our attention in that regard from a design standpoint?
I don't think so, but I mean, certainly if there's, if something comes to your mind, just let us know. We'll be happy to have input. We're, we're at that point, though, where most of our, these really marquee projects have been up front. The, the one that we're working on currently, that we just started, the new Transportation Security Center, obviously, is a, is kind of, that will wrap up a lot of the really significant project builds. Most everything else will be, for projects that are newer schools, newer campuses, our prototype elementaries, and our prototype junior highs that are still in very good shape. So a lot of that's, again, it's the non-glamorous stuff, just adding here and there, adding a marquee, changing out key systems, that sort of thing, maybe carpet, that sort of thing.
Okay, great. That is all I have. I will have to say, my colleague next to me, and Sarah as well, said that the whole sculpture thing, that could be a great Fine Arts Dual Language project.
It could, absolutely.
So there's lots of synergy opportunities, for sure.
You see what's going on at the CVPA? I mean, there's some really talented students out there.
Oh yeah, it's incredible, the talent that we could highlight and continue to showcase.
Certainly.
Thank you very much for all of your efforts and work. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir, my pleasure.
Mr. Horn, I have a, a comment and then a question. My, my comment is, thank you so much for being so careful with our citizens' money.
Absolutely.
Squeezing it as much as you can, not doing everything that maybe a building would like to have, but doing what you can that a building needs. And I think that is very important, and I'm very appreciative of the way that you're handling that.
Yes, ma'am.
If we could go back, it was in the, the slides about the phases.
Okay.
And there was a slide that said that the football field at Sagin had been completed.
Yes.
I don't know, are you talking about the field that's there beside the MAC?
This would be, so what we've replaced recently, we, we accelerated the surface for Bowie and Sagin for their, for their, I guess it would be a JV field, so to speak. We accelerated that because the, the, the surface was tearing significantly. So we, we bid this work and brought that to you, accompanied by the name of Hellis, you probably all heard their name. They actually donated the field that was, that we put at work a few years back. They were the contractor who did the work there at Bowie and Sagin. And so we, Coach White and Dr. Hill asked us to consider bringing that forward, and so that was a pullout project, as we call it, to replace those fields early on.
Okay, and when, when will that be done? I was over at Sagin last week, and, and the field had deep, deep crevices. They, they can't even use it for fear of the, the players would, would be injured by stepping into those crevices.
Is this the, are you speaking of the practice field?
Practice field.
Yeah, I'm speaking more of the, the actual turf field.
The JV field, okay.
So on the field that you're talking about, the practice fields, and there'll be some information that'll go out in Dr. Smith's report tomorrow to help answer those questions. But you, you brought that to us, yes, in October, and we began working at that time with, with Coach White and Dr. Hill to talk about how we could restore those fields. And it's pretty involved, the, the surface there, we had to first go down and repair all the irrigation system. So we've put new isolation valves in the field, we've put new rotors in the field, a new controller, so that we could get the, the water to the field regularly. And then, but we didn't want to take away the utilization of the field for any time that they would like to use it during the school year. That was a wish that Coach White had. So our plan is, and plus, we can't really seed during the winter, so it made very little sense to tear it out, or tear that field up until we get to the spring. So as April comes along, we're ready, we're primed and ready to go, we're going to bring infill dirt into the, to that area, and we'll, what we call top dress, we have a large machine that we load the dirt into, and, and it just, it's kind of a golf course-type equipment, piece of equipment. And we'll level that field out, fill in cracks and holes, and get it nice and smooth. And then at that point, we'll raise the rotors, the sprinkler rotors up, or the sprays up, to where they're at the right height, and we'll grade it, finish grading, and then we'll overseed that. And then we'll spend the rest of the, the spring and the summer watering and, pardon me, watering and fertilizing, so that we can make sure we can pass our GMAX test in August and make it playable for the students in the, in the fall.
Good. And that, and that will start in April?
We're going to start that in April, yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for that. I know that's been an issue there, that they weren't able to use that field for fear of stepping into one of the cracks, and it's just so wasteful to have that there and not be able to use it. So I appreciate your attention to that, I really do.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you, Dr. Hill. Thank you. We now move to discussion C, the Special Education Program update. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, President Fowler. Our last update tonight is an update on our Special Education Program from Chief Academic Officer Dr. Stephen Wertz and Director of Special Education Cindy Brown. Dr. Wertz?
All right, good evening, President Fowler, Dr. Smith, members of the board. I feel like I'm back at home. So thank you all for letting me be here tonight. I'm here to provide an update with special education, about special education, and I have, of course, here Cindy Brown, you can come join me, our Director of Special Education here with me this evening. I also want to recognize her team. I asked Ms. Bustamante, I said, did they have to come? And you know what? They didn't. They, they came because they're here supporting their director, so thank you all so much. We have an amazing staff. They provide support and services to students who have some of the most specialized needs. So I just want to thank you for sticking it out this late, even though I know you have a very early morning tomorrow. So I thought I would start off just to give some context about what special education is. And in special education, we like to say, it is a service, it is not a place. I, in my previous, in a previous role, I like to think of it as, they have citizenship in general education, they use their passport to get services in special education, but they live in general ed. And it's designed to provide students who are eligible with services that are customized to meet their individual needs. And it's aligned to the federal law, which is known as the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA. It is individualized programming, and it is provided at no cost to families. And it's really important to note that families are actually key members as part of the decision-making process when it comes to the design of the learning experience that the kids are having in the classroom in special education. There is a continuum of services, which Cindy Brown is going to talk about a little bit this evening, to try to maximize the opportunity for students to be engaged with their non-disabled peers as much as possible. She'll refer to the difference between general education and the least restrictive environment, and our goal is always to ensure that our kids have access to the, the least restrictive environment to meet their individual needs. I thought I would share a little bit about what special education looks like here in Arlington. So we currently have a participation rate of about 12% of our district total student enrollment population, equates to about 6,500 or more students. We have about 480 classroom teachers and 579 peer professionals across multiple programs. We have a staff of 95 speech pathologists, school psychologists, audiologists, diagnosticians, therapists, and you can see the list kind of goes on and on. And it really takes this army to try to work collaboratively with teachers and staff at the buildings to ensure that our students have the best experience as possible. I thought it would also be important to give everyone a sense of like what the initial, what the referral rate looks like, because students who have needs are, those needs are discovered through the referral and evaluation process. And this just gives you what it's looked like over the last few years. You'll hear all across the state that the volume of referrals that, that staff receive, and the number of students that are qualifying for services, has increased pretty dramatically. So if you'll notice, for example, in 2122, we had 1,187 referrals, which resulted in 1,030 qualifying students. The following year, that jumped to over 1,400. And this year, we're already sitting at about 1,300 referrals at our, at our desks today. Right now, our qualification rate hovers around 90%, so about 10% of the students that are referred don't qualify for services. But it doesn't necessarily mean that they don't have a need, and that's usually just addressed through some other process. And then the other part about this, I think's important to note, too, that Cindy will share, is how dyslexia and dysgraphia services have been integrated into the whole special ed umbrella, which has also grown some of the referral process and the time that staff is doing evaluating students. Right now, we currently have about 3,800 students, a little more than 3,800 students that are in resource and inclusion, and they receive part of their, their education in class in the general ed environment. And if they're, and will they receive all of it in, in their inclusion, if they're inclusion students in the general ed environment, and staff pushes in to support them in the classroom. If they're a resource student, they may have some portion of the day where they're in pullout in a small group setting with a special educator. We also have about a little over 3,200 students who receive speech therapy, speech and language therapy, and these services are provided to help them with their articulation experience. therapy, and these services are provided to help them with their articulation expressive language. And also the support occurs in the classroom, general education environment, as well as in a speech class with us, with the speech pathologist. We do have drop-in speech students who are not currently enrolled in ISD, but they are served here. And then I thought it would be important to also give some background, especially to those who might be in our audience listening, about what other specialized programs are available to students who are receiving specialized services. So we have what we call ALTCRIC, which is alternative curriculum. We have a little over 574 students that are actually engaged in that program, which is designed specifically for students who have cognitive disabilities. We have about 47 students who are, have severe and profound disabilities, we call it ISPD, and those students have medical needs and those are also served in specialized learning environments. We also have what we call ABL, which is academic and behavior learning environment. And we have over 240 students that receive services in this area, which focuses on communication, social work behavior, and also the abstract thought process that kids have, go through. And then CEES, which is across different sections of town in terms of it's being housed at multiple campuses. We have 162 students that sit in that program and these students have severe chronic behavior that really impact their ability to be successful in school, and so that program tries to address that. And then finally, ESE, which is early childhood special education. We have about 200 students in ages three through five that are served in that program. And that focuses on developing their language and cognitive skills and, and do so in a social and physical environment that ideally is in more in the general ed. So you're going to hear a lot more about, one of the, the areas that we are trying to work on is try to integrate our early childhood students into the general ed environment and serve them there as much as possible. We also are, house the Regional Day School for the Deaf, and we have this at three different campuses. It starts in elementary, they matriculate at junior high, and they go to high school. We have 58 students that are served across our school district and these, these students actually come from three different school districts. So while we teach them, they come to us from other places and we have great relationships with those two other, those other districts. We also have a pre-vocational awareness and vocational adjustment class for students, about 100, a little over 115, 117 students are providing instruction in that program. And then we also have 18-plus, and if you've been in the building here on Fridays, you've seen our 18-plus kids, they're amazing. We have over, over 100 students in that program and that's a really, a great program that's community-based. It provides students with vocational training and support so that they can really gain, gain the skills they need for some gainful employment once they leave us. Oh, and as another point of interest, that program serves students all the way until their 22nd birthday. So I wanted just to kind of lay the foundation about the, the intent of our presentation this evening, now that I provided you a little bit of background about the program. Back in 21-22, we conducted or went through a program review with the public consulting group. We hired an outside agency to come in and just, and evaluate our program, help us to understand where the strengths and bright spots were, where were the opportunities for improvement, and to provide us with some recommendations. The final report was provided to us in May of 2022 and the special education department collaborated with that, with that group to design an action plan that we've been actively working through to shore up any areas where there were opportunities. These areas inside the, the findings or the recommendations that came from the public consulting group really focus on five main core areas. Academic rigor, making sure that we were sustaining and increasing academic rigor for students that were being served in the special education environment. Making sure that we, we elevate evidence-based practices for teachers so that we train and support them in implementing those practices so that they, that those students can experience hi- high rigor in the classroom. We also have focused on providing consistent services across all schools. So when you're in a school district with 76 campuses and students in special education services served across all of them, you want to make sure that their experience and the quality of their education is not dependent on the school they're at or the teacher that they're being served by. And so we've been working on making sure that those services are consistent and accessible to those kids across the, the district. And then we've also been working on recruitment and retention. As you know, teaching right now is, is an area where all of us are looking to find teachers. It's not, it's not indicative of Arlington, it's actually across the United States, to be frank. But special education is also continues to be one of those areas, it's a high-neat area and so the staff has been working on strategies with human resources to try to recruit and retain our special educators so they can be accessible to our students. And then finally, what I'd mentioned earlier is expanding the least restrictive environment continuum so that our students have more opportunities and more experiences in the general ed environment with their non-disabled peers. So with that introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Brown and she's going to walk you through all the things we've been working on and we'll start answering questions, so there you go.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. All right, good evening, everybody. I'm excited to get to shine a spotlight on some of the work that we've been doing over the past few years and to make sure that our special education services are top-notch across the district. So I want to expand, first of all, in those focus areas that Dr. Wertz touched upon. The first would be probably the most important foundational piece, which is the increasing the academic rigor and high expectations. One of the things that is paramount to understand with special education students is they are general education students first. We want to make sure that they are having an equal opportunity to engage in the grade level teaks. Most of our special education students take the STAR test. And so they're held to the same expectations as everybody else. So one of the things we've really been working on is making sure that our kids have as much time as possible in those general education classrooms. And that comes back to least restrictive environment, which I'll talk about a little bit further in a minute. It also means that we've been reassigning in our, in our department to make sure that our people are where the kids are. And you saw Dr. Wertz shared with you some of our numbers of programming across the district. Alternate curriculum has been growing leaps and bounds, business is booming, and so we did some realignment in there to make sure we've got specialists in place to support those people as they're trying to do their work. We have worked really hard to partner and look at our resource inclusion teachers a little bit differently. They're gen ed teachers first too. We want to make sure that they have an opportunity to work alongside their partners and they attend professional development with their partners. You've heard a lot this year about the content roadmap sessions. Those resource teachers are going to those with the gen ed teachers, they're not pulled off specially for that. We've also worked hard to partner with curriculum and instruction on those sessions and others, and also with early childhood department. Our ECSE teachers go to the same sessions as our pre-K teachers do, so we make sure those kids have the same expectations. Next up that kind of goes with that is implementing those high-leverage special education evidence-based practices with fidelity. You've heard a lot about best practices over the past few years. Those best practices apply to special education too. Formative assessment, giving good feedback, small group instruction is the heart and soul of special education. So we want to make sure that we are looking for those things in the classroom. So I've included on this slide for you just a snapshot of one of the things that our many specialists are out on the campuses doing day in, day out, which is providing feedback to the teachers and to the administrators, so they know what to look for. So that's kind of helping our teachers know and our principals know what should they be looking for in the classrooms. We've also tried to look at some different ways to do PD. We don't always get to be face-to-face with everybody as much as we like. So for example, right now, we're rolling out how to start thinking about collaborative teaching practices and we've got an online course for that. We did some online learning around our BAS assessment system and do the math also, it's been a blended learning environment. We also want to make sure that our teachers see everybody and so we've been really focusing on making sure our specialists are out on those campuses, day in, day out. You can come to the second floor anytime and the half where the special ed specialists are is usually empty. We want to also make sure, as a system this large, that we're providing consistent services in all of our schools. We've been working really hard as a division to make sure that we're meeting regularly with each other. We have our director sync-ups, where we meet with special ed, curriculum instruction, professional learning, just to make sure we're all on the same page and we're aware of each other's work and where we might overlap. We've started doing a little bit differently for staffing this year, is using a weighted model. So my curriculum coordinators looked at, what are the different kids' programming? What is their disability? Because we know that some require more strain on the campus than others. So we've done a little bit of shifting on that, it hasn't made a huge difference in the quantity, but it's going to make a difference on those campuses to make sure they've got the support they need. We've also looked for developing program standards for all of our specialized classrooms and for our resource inclusion classrooms too. Principals come with a wide range of background and experiences, as a past principal myself, some have taught music, some have taught second grade, some have taught high school. And so we want to help, help them know what should they be looking for in their special education classrooms. Next is, every week when we have our CC meetings, we have a regular review of all of our processes to make sure that we're all looking at things the same way across the district. How do we make sure our expectations and the services we provide are the same? We also have started a monthly department newsletter for campus and department staff. It's another way for us to communicate with everybody and to develop that consistency with every stakeholder. Dr. Wertz alluded to the fact that dyslexia is going through a bit of a overhaul. Seems like every week TEA has something new that they've put on us. We just found out last week now, dyscalcula, or not dyscalculia, dysgraphia, is going to be handled the same way as dyslexia. And so we're looking to see, you heard Dr. Hill talk about that, it's going to be a screening process too. We have begun that migration. Ebony Nix is our coordinator of dyslexia, she's done a very thorough job at this point in time. We have about 74% of our students that are currently serving or 504 dyslexia have been offered a full evaluation. And it's, most of the parents have taken up on that, it's about 95%. And so that's one of the reasons why our referral numbers are going to continue to grow, because all of those kids now have to go through the evaluation process. Last is the one, not last, one of the last, is probably the biggest one that everybody's talking about, which is how do we recruit and retain top-notch people? So we can define the work, we know what we need to do, but if you don't have the people to do it, it's kind of useless. So we've been working for a while as a department to expand different pathways and partnerships. We partnered with Region 11 to be able to have some of our paraprofessionals get certified. We have some programs that teachers that are in the classroom that want to get masters with North Texas, with UTA, we've been providing opportunities for that as well. It also means though that we need to make sure that the people that are in the classrooms doing the work feel supported. And one of those things has been, when we have challenges around staffing, for whatever reason, somebody's out on FMLA, we have not enough people in the classroom, we've been really trying to tailor an individual response to each campus as they have that come across. If they don't have enough TAs, then how can we use who you have in a creative way? How can we make sure that we're condensing our kids into classrooms, so you're not trying to push into five different classrooms? Maybe it's a master schedule situation, whatever it is, or if we need to provide some interim or some gap support, we do that too. Partnering with human resources has been a big part. I meet every week with our human resource partner to talk about issues we're having, hotspots we have across the district. And we're also looking at, we have people, some of my coordinators that go to different job fairs, we have a presence at our job fairs too, so we can help to recruit the best people in there. It also means getting interns when we can, whether it's an LSSP intern, which right now we have four, which is good news. And also we have speech pathologist interns, et cetera. We also have weekly touchpoints. Every single new teacher and bridge teacher sees somebody from our department each week. It might just be a quick in and out, or it might be a full-blown classroom visit, but they see everybody. In the first three weeks of January, we actually saw 66 bridge teachers across the district. Finally is we have new special education teachers PLCs. We know their needs are unique, they got to deal with the paperwork, they got to deal with the assessments, and so we meet with them every single month as our own PLC group across the district. We usually do that virtually, we found that was a better turnout. Next up is the very important piece, that really requires a mind shift and a cultural shift, which is least restrictive environment. You know, it used to be that we saw students, they were special education, they went over here. We know now that kids learn best the most time they can have interacting with their peers. So we have started by making sure that we have top-notch IEP processes in place, and that began last May. We had two days with Region 11 training for our department staff on standards-based IEPs. Everything has to come back to the IEP. It's not about saying, well, this kid should be in this program, or this is a kid that needs this, but what are their goals? And if those are well-written, then we design the services around those. And so we started with that, then we rolled that out to every single special ed teacher, no matter if they're a specialized classroom, resource inclusion, speech pathologist, and they all got that training back to school this past August. Our staff attends weekly campus staffing meetings at every single campus, whether it's a specialist or a coordinator, to be there to support and kind of troubleshoot some of these things. We can also see if there's something coming on the horizon that way. And then when we have those decisions, we're having that staffing really talking about how can we maximize their time in general education? That means when we talk about our continuum of services, a student who may spend part of their time in resource, part of their time in inclusion, but we want to make sure we're maximizing the time that they're with their gen ed peers. It also might be somebody who spends part of their time in a specialized classroom, like our ABL or our ALTCRIC, how are they then maximizing their time to be out in the classroom? Maybe they spend some time in resource, so there's not a one-size-fits-all. That individual in IEP is the most important word there. Along the continuum of services is something new that we've been working on now, since I took the reins last year, was in the process of starting to be thought about, but that is the AISD Learning Center, which is rethink redo. One of the topics that's out there about education these days, besides having enough employees, is student behavior. And we see that in special education as well. So we began exploring the idea of having a place where kids could come who are not being successful in their probably specialized classrooms most of the time. Where can we take them to give them some really intensive behavioral support, give them some new things in their toolbox, so that then they're ready to return to their campus? We know they're not going to be ready to return to their campus unless they also have parental support and that the campus is ready to receive them back. So it's going to be about building capacity in all the stakeholders around that student, as well as within that student. It's going to be housed at 600 New York. And we'll take over the space, the care clinic has it in the evenings, we'll have it during the day. So it's going to be about serving students, they'll be able to use our classrooms with flexible seating and all those kinds of pieces, and then we'll turn it over to them in the evenings when they have it up there. We're really excited about this opportunity, we spent a lot of time researching it, we talked to districts like Lubbock, Grand Prairie, Irving, that already have programs like this in place, did some site visits to Sanger. And it's kind of a topic that's going out all around. I've gotten a reach out from other districts wanting to know, what are you doing for that? I'll go, well, we want to know what you're doing for that. So we're excited about this opportunity. We're looking at opening it in August. We want to make sure we have the right people in there to do the work. So, all that being said, there's obviously more work to do. So what are our next steps? Well, we've begun a really exciting partnership, I was excited to see Arlington Council PTA's record, recognized this afternoon, with the Partner Resource Network and Arlington Council PTAs to start providing some workshops for parents across the district. It's a series, they've done a lot of work with Region 11. We're going to start, we have our first one coming up later this month at Corey, they're going to do it at four different locations so that everybody has access to it. So it's going to be exciting, especially for our campuses that don't have PTAs. We're going to continue that strain on standards, training on standards-based IEP development because coming up next spring is our cyclical TEA audit. That is when they come onsite, go through all of our paperwork, look at our services, and give us feedback on them. We actually had a day last week with all the diagnosticians and some of our Region 11 staff, where we dug deeper into using the rubric and looking at our folders. We are looking at refining our SPED internet site, there's a lot of wonderful resources on there, probably not super accessible for everybody, so we're going to keep refining that and making it better. We are also looking at, as our 18-plus program has started to grow, is, one of the things that I was handed when I came here was the plans for having maybe a transition center, where we could bring those students together. Currently, our 18-plus are all over the district, and if we could bring them together, it's just going to help give them more opportunities and partner with some different communities people. And then also continuing that work around inclusive practices and least restrictive environment. That's not something that can happen overnight, it requires a mind shift and as new people enter the system, saying this is what we believe in Arlington ISD and making that become an automatic response. So now on to the good stuff, the bright spots, the things we want to highlight. First and foremost is RDA. Special education, this is our accountability system with the state. Zero being the best score and four being the worst. You'll see we have no fours on here, we're not even going to talk about them. However, two years ago... Yeah, two, three?
Over.
COVID, yeah. We were a four. Our last report that just came out, because it was delayed, we have now moved up to a Our last report that just came out, because it was delayed, we have now moved up to a two. This is not something that happens easily. It happens because of these people. It happens because of the people out there. It happens because our support system's giving us the tools we need to have that happen. So, that is something to really, really be proud of and celebrate. To dig a little bit deeper, some more celebrations there. We had no areas of disproportionality, which in the past, we did have a subgroup that we were looking at, that we were possibly over-identifying in. Three out of our four end-of-course tests in high school were actually zeros, which is the best you can do. So, really proud of that, too. And then, our 3-8 star math performance has moved from a three to a two. And we credit that with some of the things we've done in providing the right instructional materials on campuses for that. So, we're excited to see how we can keep that moving forward. You can also see down below that overall score is great. These are the breakdown of all the different indicators. And one of the things you'll notice is from 22 to 23, there's more indicators than 23. That's because the state likes to keep putting them on there and others are report-only. But we even were able to do well with the new indicators on there. So, we went from three zeros to 10. We went from four ones to two, three twos to six, and then eight threes to only four. So, everything's been moving in the right direction. So, we're really proud, really proud of that. We had a big celebration when that happened. We also want to highlight, as Dr. Wertz alluded to, is the Regional Day School Program. We have gotten a statewide reputation for excellence on that. We have kids that want to come, even though they're zoned for other areas, to come to ours. Part of that's been some of that work that we've been doing with HR to attract the right people, is they gave us a pay increase for interpreters, that now we have other districts reaching out to our coordinator all the time to find out, how did you guys do that? And look at how that's reduced us from having five to eight. That's tremendous. We partnership with Mansfield, Venus, and Kennedale on that. Special Olympics is another program that's been growing, that brings everybody joy when you get to work with our students, our Olympians. Last year, we had 120 students from across Arlington AISD, including our unified partners. And those are our general education kids that work with our special Olympians. This year, we've introduced bowling. And that number is going to be probably at least 50 more, judging by the people that have come that are interested. So, we're excited to see how that's going to keep going there. And then, last, but certainly not least, is our 18-plus program, which continues to grow with 114 students approximately across the district, 25 different community partners, including Global Life Field, City of Arlington Parks and Rec, UTA, FedEx, Sheraton Arlington Hotel, and Walmart. And a lot of our kids have gotten jobs. I know we have one now that works for UTA in their catering department. She was super proud, came by my office after popping popcorn to tell me about that one. We've also started to grow our own. We had our first student, he was, wanted to, his lifelong dream was to work in the Martin High School cafeteria. And so, that is what he is now doing full-time. And our second one was just hired at the recent job fair and is now doing the Arlington AISD custodial staff. So, it's super exciting for us to see that, too. All right. Now, your turn. Questions?
Ms. Richardson?
I love hearing those stories right there, how it's come full circle, where we provided that education and now they have an opportunity to come back and to serve us in a different capacity that makes them proud. Thank you for doing that. Dr. Wertz, one of the things that you started off by telling us was that special education is a service and not a place. And I think that's so important. We are saying that every student is going to leave here exceptionally prepared, and we are meeting students where they are. This right here shows us that. One of the things that, as we were looking at our second slide, it was talking about how we have the referrals coming in and who are qualifying. What is our timeline looking like when these referrals come in? How long is it taking for students to be diagnosed, be able to have the testing done? Can you walk me through a little bit of that process and what parents are looking at?
Yeah. So, any parent can request special ed evaluation for their student, and they start that on the campus, reach out to your campus admin, and get that process going. Same thing happens if campus staff thinks there's a learning disability, they talk with their campus admin and go from there. Once the campus administrator has received that request, they have 15 days to act on it. That means they either begin the process, have the parent come in and sign permission, or they say, we don't need to do this evaluation at this time, and here's why, and provide an explanation. So, it's 15 school days from when that is received. Once the process begins, then it's another 45 days. So, it can seem like a really, really long time. Things that can impact that, if a student's out, that can back things up. Weather days, of course, can do that as well. But it's that 15 to 45, and so, when you start to look at it, it can seem like it's really strung out.
Is there anything that we can do to help in this process? Is there a delay on our side at all that not, that we don't have enough human capital to meet those needs of testing?
Not at this time. Now, is it taking the maximum window? Absolutely. I'm not going to lie, because our staff is stretched to the max. But we're being really strategic about that. We're looking at backing that up, trying to get it done as quickly as possible so that we're not waiting until the absolute last due date.
Okay. Thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for the services that you're providing for our students.
Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, Dr. Brown. And I want to thank Ms. Richardson. You asked my first question. That's probably the top question we get is, you know, what would you say to a parent who suspects those learning differences in their child? And I've been there, and I can only add to that, that it is, it is so important for you to listen to that intuition because whatever the outcome is, it's peace of mind. And our kids get access to what they need to be successful when they get those early interventions and those important accommodations, whether it's preferential seating, visual schedules, content language supports, and the work that everybody does, teachers and staff, the team here who came tonight. It's just amazing how our educators here in Arlington AISD pull out all the stops in order to help each child fill their capacity. The only thing I want to add, because Ms. Richardson asked the same questions I was wondering about, I know, Dr. Brown, you like to give your staff kudos, and they absolutely deserve it, but this growth is also a testament to your leadership. I'm really grateful that you're our director, and you bring that principal lens, you bring that curriculum instruction lens, you bring that former teacher lens, and your leadership is absolutely integral to our district. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to add one thing about the referral process, too. If you do get people with that, just for everybody's peace of mind, you might find things on there for yourself, Ms. McMorrow, is spedtext.org is something that TEA has created that is just for special education parents. They even have videos on there that'll walk you through the process. You can answer any question on there, and it's a great resource for our parents. Spedtext.org.
Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler. And again, thank you, Ms. Brown, and thank you for the whole staff. You guys have been busy doing a lot of work. There's been a lot of heavy lifting, and you guys are making great progress. And, you know, our strategic plan, you know, says, you know, all students will have a rigorous and relevant education and be exceptionally prepared for college career, military. And that means all students, especially our sped students, everybody. And COVID, I think, really did a number. And I think our RDA scores in '21 are testament to that. So, it's been said that, you know, when, when we get a cold, our most vulnerable students, our ECODIS and our sped students, they get the flu. And I think also that COVID really exposed structural cracks in our systems that maybe we didn't see. Maybe they were just lurking under the cover, but COVID exposed them. And some, the damage done across the state and across the country varied from district to district. And I think we were hit pretty severely as testament to our RDA scores, but you guys have done a tremendous job in kind of getting us back to where we need to be. And I know before COVID, Dr. Wertz, when you, I think you were early on, you came to our Financial Futures Committee, and someone, maybe me, asked you, what keeps you up at night in terms of what do you need for budget? And you didn't hesitate. You said sped. I think that was probably in 2018 or 2017. I don't know if you remember that. And so, I think, you know, thanks for having the foresight to bring PCG in. I think they did a phenomenal job on our, despite the challenges, right? Because they're in the middle of COVID, when everyone's remote, so it's hard for them to do an operational audit. But I think in the end, they pulled it off, and they really honed in a lot of root causes and areas of change that were needed in this district. So, I'm going to focus more on that. You gave a great presentation. There was one thing I, I was curious about in your presentation.
Sure.
You talked about how you guys are prepping for the TEA audit that's coming up. And that's, did they do that to all districts, or is this?
Yes. Everybody across the district, across the state is on a cycle.
Cycle? And this is just our normal cycle?
And this is our turn.
Okay. Great.
Yeah.
I'm sure you love it.
We're excited for the feedback.
So, one of the things you did mention, you got, gave a lot of great updates. And I'm pulling up the, the PCG audit.
Sure.
In terms of the recommendations. One of the things they mentioned at the time is that, in fact, their first recommendation was regarding our multi-tiered system and supports our MTSS system, that at the time, and I believe this was true, that it wasn't fully fleshed out. And they made a number of recommendations for that in relation to sped, and that seemed applicable across the board. Where are we? Have we completed the recommendations? Were we already on, on glide path to fully flush out that system to where it met the standards they were looking for?
Well, I think one of the things that's happened with MTSS is it's actually not under special education anymore in Arlington. It's moved under state and federal interventions and operations.
Right.
And so, we'll be working with them to bridge that crossover. One of the things we, as we talk about least restrictive environment, and we talk about referrals, too, what have we tried before we jump to the referral process? What interventions have been put in place? State and federal's done a lot to try to get that cemented across the district, and we're working with them, and we consult with them constantly on that process.
Okay. But in terms of the concerns that they had, it's still a work in progress.
Yes.
Yes, I was just going to say, we've actually made a lot of progress in that area since that review. Now, there's a system that's fleshed out. There are roles that have been defined. There's a structure for campuses to follow in terms of identifying and serving students. They're tiered out, so we have all three tiers tiered out, including behaviors and also the academic side. And like she said, it's all housed basically out of the state and federal program, which is also focused on interventions. And the purpose of that really in link, in how we link it to the special education department is that really should be the last resort. You don't, you want, if a student can be served in a general education environment and, and they respond successfully to an intervention, then they're fine. They don't, then that's usually where they would land. Once those interventions are exhausted and students still continue to struggle, that's usually when people begin investigating even more deeply about what the concern may be. So, the answer to your, the short answer to your question is yes, we've actually made quite a bit of progress. Yeah.
Okay, good. But do we have specific KPIs and process measures in place to measure getting to the end state where we want to be? Where, in terms of a corrective action plan in that area?
Well, the.
Are we tracking it as a response to this, or since it's been moved and it's more of a broader concern?
Yeah. It wasn't really in response to special education. It was making sure there was a structure in place for interventions for all students, and that actually then helps the special education students. So, the way I would describe the, in terms of KPIs, it really varies in terms of the number of students that engage in the intervention process from year to year. What you're looking for in the system that we have now is, are students who need intervention, based on the triangulation of the data that they're having in their regular classroom, identified early? Are those interventions actually documented and tracked in terms of how much time, how often that treatment should be given? What's the cycle for review to see if it's actually working or not working, so they can make decisions about the next step? Is that in place? Who owns which parts? And what the structure is to see whether a student needs to be elevated from a tier two to a tier three? That's all part of general ed. And so, that's the structure that's been worked on. The reason why it's linked to the special education environment is because, yes, special education students will receive interventions in the general ed environment, but a lot of times, after those interventions are exhausted, if a student hasn't been identified for potential identification, that usually will often trigger a deeper question, which may later on down the road, turn into a full evaluation. And the diagnostician, when they conduct that evaluation, will gather all of that data that's been gathered as part of the MTSS process to help them see whether there's actually an educational need. So, they go hand-in-hand, but one's lives more on the general ed side, and it informs the special ed side.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. One of the other things they identified under learning environment and specialized services is the need for better collaborative teaching, I guess, from the inclusion specialist and other sped specialists in the classroom, especially when we're talking about moving more students into the least restrictive environment. Do we have goals set up that are time-bound with KPIs in terms of objectives we're trying to meet in terms of increasing the amount and fidelity needed for collaborative teaching?
I, we're, there's twofold on that, I guess. Part of it is the operational piece. Are we really getting kids into least restrictive environment and monitoring that? And no, we have not set goals for that yet, because we're just beginning that journey. Because part of that is the professional development piece. It has been a long time since we've had professional development around collaborative teaching practices. So, we're starting that right now by defining those and beginning that with our current sped staff. We'll carry that into summer impact courses for general ed and special education staff, and then throughout next year, too.
Okay. So, I, you know, you should wear this, the corrective action plan. We've got a great new chief internal auditor coming onboard, and there are a lot of these recommendations that were pointed out in here. We could turn actionable, because she's already on the sped audit, and is, one of her priorities she wants to do is, we've got a program called Team A+ that we use in internal audit and has dashboarding capabilities for the board. There are a lot of these key corrective actions that came out of this audit that we would like to see progress towards on our dashboard in Team A+. So, that's one of the first Team A+ projects she's going to be implementing. So, that's, again, the reason for my question is, you know, where are we in this process? Because you guys have made tremendous progress on a lot of things, but there's still a lot of work yet to do.
Absolutely. And I think with that one, what I'm looking at right now is how do we gather that data? Because we'd have to look at each individual student's schedule of services to see how much time do they have in inclusion versus resource, so we can see if we're moving that bar. And so, that's what we got to do, is set that baseline first and talk with research and accountability about how we can go about gathering that data. And then, yes, then we'll set goals and move it forward with that. So, I hope to have that in place before we start next fall, so we have that baseline going forward.
All right. Well, I'll try not to be repetitive. I'm really, you know, from our governance role as a board, when we have, you know, something that pointed out the deficiencies that were pointed out in this, you know, we, we don't normally get involved in operations, but when there is a problem.
Sure.
That needs addressing, then we're a team, right? We work together with you guys. We're all in the same team. We want to see it fixed, because those, you know, all students deserve to graduate exceptionally prepared for college or career, especially our sped students. And if we need to make budgetary shifts and help direct things from budget or policy or in terms of setting his goals and aligning our goals so that you guys meet your objectives, that's something, that is very much in our purview, and we, again, want to work cooperatively with you guys to, to address these kind of things. One of the things is, you know, we just talked about, Kelly Horn just came up and gave us a good bond update. One of the things I noticed is, one of the recommendations was to distribute the services out throughout more of our campus in a more equitable fashion, because they tend to be in very specific spots, and makes it difficult to take those students and put them in the least restrictive environment. But then, we got, I'll pick on Web again. Web, what a phenomenal facility, especially for special need communities. All of the different programs. Obviously, we can't put that level of capital improvements in all 53 elementary schools. But have you all looked at our capital needs in terms of where we do need to add and distribute specialized classrooms to handle those type of services?
We just.
Closer to those general education classrooms.
Right. I think the biggest shift has been with our ECSE programs, making sure they're on a campus that has pre-K 3 and pre-K 4, so they can get out into those general classrooms. That's been kind of the first prong of that. We're just now going through the process of looking at where are we going to expand to? And we also always look at, where's the available space? Do they have the types of classrooms that we need? Because like for our ALTCORIC, ISPD, they have very specific physical needs. And so, we go to where those are within that feeder pattern. Our campuses are closely enough together right now that I don't think we've had a capital need on that.
So, I was, I was part of the conversation with PCG specifically around this, because I elevated this as actually a goal of mine, which is ideally, when it comes to special education, you would like students to be served at their home campus. You want them to be in their neighborhood school ideally, working and interacting with their friends and kids that they're familiar with, that they walk home with, or that they see in their playground when they're on the weekend. The challenge with special education is there are some programs that Cindy is alluding The challenge with special education is there are some programs that Cindy is alluding to that require specialized equipment and that's where the cost comes. And it is not cost efficient to have something like equipment at every single school. And in those specialized programs, you do have to, as a district, try to cluster them across the district in all, but what I say, the four corners, to make sure that it's accessible to students. They're not having to drive far distances to get to their program and it's as close to home as possible. One thing we try to do to try to find the sweet spot for both of those, and I, I feel like we've made a lot of progress over the last few years, is we try to cluster students primarily at their home campus if the majority of them live there. So let's say, for example, I'll just use Little as an example. If there's a specialized program sitting at Little, but most of the actual students lived at another school, I'm just making up something like Miller. We, if there's space there, we would try to have that school host those students at that school and have their kids go to school at Miller. So we've made a lot of strides with this recommendation to be really strategic about where we place schools that have the specialized equipment. Even when we build the school, we think, is this a school that needs to have it? And then when there are programs that don't require specialized equipment, but it's a specialized program, we annually look at what's the makeup of those, that student population? Where are they, where is their actual home address? And is there a need that of for a move? And there have been several years where we have shifted programs. We do try to, and I'm gonna say one last caveat to this. We do try to be thoughtful about how often you do that too. Because students get acclimated to their environment and they make friends and you want them to have a stable experience. You don't want kids moving all the time. But every once in a while where there's a key moment where the shift has happened and it makes sense to move, then we'll make that move. But our goal is to try to allow kids to go to school in their own neighborhood school.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. So rigor, we hear that, that's kind of the buzzword when we were at Council of Great City School is, you know, what we found in with students and trying to move the noodle, needle in terms of student out.
Or the noodle, it's fine.
Needle. Is oftentimes those kids aren't getting instruction at their grade level. And it's hard to bring them up if they're not even getting instruction at the appropriate level of of rigor. And then, I guess it holds true for sped as well.
Sure.
And that was one of the things that came through the the PCG audit as well. And you mentioned it in the IEP changes needed in the IP. It's one of those nights. IEP process.
Yes.
So where, how far along the path to our goal in terms of of what the ideal IEP in terms of rigor? And and being standards based, meeting this, I mean, assuming by standards based, you mean the teaks at the appropriate grade level for that student?
And making sure that our goals are measurable, you know, having SMART goals, those kind of things along the way. And I think.
The board loves SMART goals, but.
Part of the, and you can, when you look at our RDA, right? One of our areas that we still need to grow in is three through eight, RLA, science and social studies. Well, what we know is usually the problem with science and social studies, it comes back to RLA and it comes back to reading along the way. So part of that is educating our resource teachers along the way of how do you teach those skills that are needed? But maybe put them in a lower grade level text. So we're still getting those skills while you're helping them get closer and closer to reading on grade level. And part of that can be through the same programs we use in gen ed. You know, when we use Amplify, I think it's called Boost now, that is personalized to each learner. So as they navigate their way through it, it's going to differentiate itself. And that's separate from resource, that is not something that happens in resource classes. The other is helping our teachers understand more about the science of teaching reading. And how does that apply then to our sped students? How do we help make sure they've got the decodables that they need to be able to read? And so we're kind of working on two different pieces there. But the way our RDA data looks right now, it really points to a reading comprehension issue. So how do we then keep our kids moving along that comprehension continuum while also helping them be able to access grade level text? It also comes back to in our IEPs, do we have the right accommodations in place to do that? Because if we have the right accommodations, they should be able to access grade level material.
Right.
Whether that's using speech to text, whether that's, you know, giving them graphic organizers, whatever that accommodation is. So it's, it's continuing to look at and having data drive those decisions.
Good, yeah. Thanks for that answer. One of the bright spots, I think, that audit pointed out was our family and community engagement with our sped parents. Is, are we still meeting those same high expectations in terms of?
Absolutely.
Family and community engagement?
We have regular social outings around Christmas time. They went to the Parks Mall, kids got to buy presents for each other, they did a Secret Santa exchange and parents come to that too. Special Olympics is another way to get parents involved, so the more that grows, the more opportunities it gives as well. And then we also do some specialized in-home training when the IEP dictates it. So we're still developing those same things, but we're also trying to get more understanding out into the general population about how special education works and also our resource and inclusion parents that way. They seem to be the group that does not get as much information sometimes as some of our specialized classroom people do.
So let's, let's swat, switch gears. You talked about how you're, you've worked with HR and you've kind of done some innovative things to kind of get the resources where they're needed and make up for some of the shortages. The attrition rate was pointed out as, especially in this, in sped positions, was really high. But it was high for everyone because of COVID.
Right.
Is it still in kind of a problem? Are we still, have we made any progress in terms of just not only retaining, but still getting the bodies we need in the door?
We are definitely in better shape than we were in August. We continue to improve as we go along and making sure that we have the right people in there. You know, when we started off this school year, my department, my team was out on campuses actually serving as teachers for the first six weeks as we got people in place and got things leveled out. We are in a much better space now. Is it perfect? No. And as you saw from what Dr. Wertz shared, our numbers of special education students are continuing to grow. So if we don't start getting the right people in there, that's going to be an issue going forward.
One of the things that was pointed out was the survey and around HR. And we on the board constantly get this complaint about how long it takes from the minute an applicant is offered and when they actually are hired in in a classroom. There are a number of quotes, I won't go through them, but I'm referring to the ones on page one twenty-four and one twenty-five that. Put on my readers. An ASD staff survey respondent shared, I understand there is a shortage of classroom teaching applicants. The human resources take so long that they've already found jobs. Can take two months from the time an applicant gets an offer to when they can actually start sometimes. And and especially when you're talking about TAs who are not making a lot of money and need a job, they're not going to stick around for two months to get hired. Do we, have we been tracking that as a KPI? And are, is that timeframe getting shorter?
Resource keeps track of that. I can tell you one thing that through us working more closely with them is I have a hotline. When I know a campus has a candidate they've put in, I can call them and say, this is a critical need campus. We had one this year that was short a lot of staff at the beginning of the year. And they make sure to prioritize getting them done quickly. So they've been very responsive to us that way. Doesn't help the overall program, but I know that HR is working on that themselves.
We, we as board members get complaints from principals, from teachers, from parents who volunteer in the buildings. And it's, but I don't know that we're really tracking that. And I wish as a, as a board, that that would be a KPI that we could track and see, yes, it is improving. Because in a market like this for talent where there's nineteen school districts, within a thirty-minute drive of Arlington, we're in a highly competitive environment for talent. And taking that long to bring someone in just isn't gonna cut it in this market, so.
So I know Mr. Keel could probably say more details around this, but the turnaround time has actually been reduced pretty significantly. I think to keep in mind, that survey was done years ago, so.
Well, it was done right after COVID when it was really bad.
Right, right, right. When it, when that was really exacerbated. Since then, the HR team has put together an action plan to reduce that time significantly. And I would, I don't want to quote him, but I think it's gone anywhere from like nineteen day, twenty, twenty, twenty-something plus days down to like twelve or fourteen. So I know that it's been improved.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they're just kind of going through the, I really love PCG's framework, kind of like the effective school framework, the six domains that they had. And I liked how they laid out the improvements based on those. Human capital is a really important one. And one of the things, because they're nice KPIs, is they benchmarked us. Now I gotta find it, I went away from it. They benchmarked us on sped positions versus other districts. And where we were in terms of with, on the ratios, the the number of, say, special education teachers or psychologists, social workers or nurses, some measures we were way under or way above the ratios, so we were doing great. But there were a number of them, like psychologists, social workers, and occupation therapists and physical therapists, where we were way outside, we were way, way under versus most of the the districts they compared us with. Have we done any, have we made a concerted effort to bring those ratios more into the norms that you see across the other districts in the state?
In regards to occupational therapists and physical therapists, yes. School psychologist slash LSSPs is a nationwide critical shortage.
Right.
The way we're providing services right now, to answer your question shortly, no, we do not have enough LSSPs in place that we need for our student population. What we are doing in the interim is hiring contractors. And we have some good contractors that we know and that we work with and they're how we've been able to provide services right now. We are working really hard. Like I mentioned, we have four LSP interns right now to grow our own. We're trying to encourage other people, you're in special education, would you like to be an LSP? It's also something that we're trying to recruit when we go to different conferences. I have a team that was down at T case this week trying to scrounge around, but it is a topic that is hot across everywhere. Districts are going to completely remote services in some instances.
Yeah.
Not something we really want to do because we know they're not effective, especially with our kids that need that service, they need that face to face. So not at that point yet. We're able to manage it, but it is a critical need across the nation.
Okay, I promise I'm, I'm getting close to the end. I know Mr. Jarvis is over there waiting patiently, but this is important.
Sure.
So let's, let's go talk about the RDAs.
Yes.
I'll try to get to a wrap up here. So kudos, the chart you showed where the shift from the number of zeros that we have now, ten. Phenomenal work, but there's one area in particular that's very intractable. And I guess you know what it is. Third, third grade read, uh, three through eight reading and our star scores in general, the the passing rate. What is it? Is that RDA one?
Yes.
Yeah, so RDA one, we, back in twenty twenty-one, we were a three across the board. And the last one in twenty twenty-three, we were a three in reading, a three in science and a three in social studies. We were two in math, which, I was having a, for a two's not really great, is it?
For a district our size, yes, it is, truthfully.
I know, but in terms of the distribution, it's a forced distribution.
Right, it's a forced distribution.
We're still in the bottom twenty percent at a two. So there's that.
Yeah, it's growth.
So, yeah, but our goals should be, we should be in the eighty percent.
Absolutely.
That's not, you know, at a zero. We should be, or for, yeah, the, it's so confusing and it's a reverse scale.
Yes, it is.
And the performance levels are zero through three and the distinction levels are one through four.
Right.
But we should be shooting for zero on everything, right? So, but I'll be happy with a two because we're making progress. So it's a little disappointing in some of the root cause analysis. I've already talked to Dr. Smith and, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll address that. But what would you say is the root cause of, in, is it, is it? I mean, I know we're not the only one struggling, especially with with our sped population, to bring our passing rates up. What have we identified? Now that we've been at it for three years, are are we trying to do other strategies? Or do you think, once we get kids doing the, I believe, once we start putting in the appropriate rigor at the appropriate like grade level, we'll start to see that grow? Is that our hope?
I, I think that is definitely part of the conversation on that. I also think as, because we're working on our current response to our RDA that we just got. When we look at our reading, and I think as I animated before, the heart of what's wrong with science and social studies is reading and that points to comprehension. And so as we look at our root cause analysis now.
Yeah.
We got to dig deeper into comprehension. And looking at our latest CA scores, the good news is sped was meeting our target for the end of the year in every area. So that's a step in the right direction. But we need to look, dig deeper into that data to look at which teaks it is and which comprehension pieces we need to do.
No, that's good. The other issue is we tend, we slipped a little bit in RDA nine, which is the early childhood promotion rate. We've got a great EC, what's the acronym?
ECSE.
ECSE program. We got great teachers back there involved. Like, and I know, I talked to, I've got friends in regional eleven in sped and this whole RDA thing is, you can argue about how just it is.
Sure.
But I would also argue, given that it is a forced distribution, you know exactly where you are versus your peers. Even in a year like COVID, right? It was forced distribution. So the fact that we were a four, everyone was in the same boat we were. The fact that we were hit harder was not good. And it meant we, we had systemic issues. The, so.
I just want to respond to that if it's okay really quickly.
No, go ahead. I knew I would trigger you.
No, it's okay. I just want to make sure we're, we're, so when it comes to the forced distribution, the reason why it's important to keep in mind is you're, it does, even if everyone had, and this is not the case, I'm just using this as an example. But even if everyone had an A, if you had the lowest A, you're going to be the four.
Yeah.
So the challenge around making goals around RDA, which is always our challenge, is that you cannot make a goal that outpaces other districts because we don't know how they're moving as the year goes. All we can do is look at the raw number and say, if, I'm making up something. If thirty-seven percent of our students are actually reaching achievement in reading, we want forty-five next year. And if other districts do the exact same thing, which you hope they will because it's their reaching kids, someone, no matter who it is, is going to be a four, someone's going to be a two, someone's going to be a three. So I, I do want to emphasize, like, our goal is always to be a zero or a one or a two. At the same time, I'm also rooting for my peers around the state, that their kids are progressing just as fast as ours, which doesn't, which means someone's always going to come out as a four or two. So I, when we're working with our team and we look at our root cause analysis and we're trying to identify, like, how do we set goals with our team? What we've chosen to do is really focus on what, what is the actual achievement of the students in Arlington I S D? And what's a reasonable amount of growth we expect to see over the course of the year? And that's the thing we're trying to move. But yeah, you, the challenge around RDAs, you really don't know where your landing point's going to be until the scores all come in.
It is not a perfect system.
Yeah, it's kind of a challenge.
That we both agree on.
Yeah.
And, and yeah, it, it is almost, it is somewhat arbitrary who ends up as a four and who ends up at the zero. But anyway, we did slip, I, I'm already over my allotted time I gave myself. We did slip on RDA nine from a three back to a two. What, any idea what the reasoning was or what the root cause was there?
A lot of that is back to that least restrictive environment and making sure that we are maximizing that time. That's a lot of the conversations that a lot of these team members are having on campuses, is how much time are our ECSE kids spending in gen ed? That's been our big piece on that. And when we have some staffing issues sometimes, that can hinder how fast that gets there. But it's really about that mind shift and making sure we understand that they need to have that exposure and making sure we have the programs in the right places. We did some movement last year to get more and we won't see that data for another year. But to make sure our kids are on campuses where they have pre-K three and pre-K four, so they can get out in those gen ed classrooms. Can't get into gen ed pre-K three classroom if you're on a campus where there isn't one.
Yeah, well, I'm two minutes over. I'm proud of myself. I thought I was going to go until eleven and there are a lot of folks here that are waiting to speak and I'm.
Yes.
I'm going to cut myself off. But this is a topic, I have a lot more questions. We would, what I would like. We would, what I would like, I would like as a trustee, is if we could have a follow-up or a workshop and we dive into the, the action plan, where we are now, because the one we had now had a lot of dates, the completion dates that have already passed, but we're still in progress, or we're just starting. And I know you just, when, when did you finally?
It's been one year now.
Yeah, it's been one year, so. And you made tremendous progress in that one year. And I will echo what Sarah said. We are so glad you're here and we're so grateful for the team and all the hard work that they are doing. We got a lot of work to do from where I would personally like to see us, but it's attainable.
Absolutely.
We're, we want you to know that we're here to support if we need to, you know, distribute services and that's gonna create needs from a capital standpoint and our next bond. Those are things that we will help prioritize if you, you know, as long as it's, you know, we're not asking for the moon. And if we need additional resources, if we need, if we have other problems that are roadblocks to achieving all the recommendations that were in the audit, we're here to help. We're partners. Hopefully we won't alight over anything like this in the future, because we really are here to help.
Absolutely, and we're excited, and we're excited by the challenges that we have in front of us too.
So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. Haynes?
I have one just very quick question. So on the slide, the next step slide, you referenced a transition center, which is very exciting. For me, I'm excited to see that on there. Is there a timeline in place?
Part of it is securing a facility right now, just like we're putting in the rethink redo in an existing AISD facility. So as we look at, you know, Mr. Horn referred to, we're moving some people around and stuff and looking for where is that possible availability? So it's something that we're ready.
Okay, so there is a goal and the intent to move forward with that. And then will you be seeking community input from any of the stakeholders that are currently supporting that community of students?
And especially the, yes, and especially the 25 people that we already work with. Absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you. That was it.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. I had, I had a couple of questions, but I, I will, I get them offline. I just had one pressing question because it's new information to me in the sped space, and that's the learning center? And I just wanted to know, if you could elaborate more on how the learning center interacts with our LRE require, or least restrictive environment requirements, because I, I know in the past, at least, that's been something that folks are really reluctant to do to remove students who are receiving special education services from their, their home campus and sending them to an alternative placement.
Absolutely. First and foremost, we're talking about a very small group of kids, and it fits into our continuum of services. So let's say campus has reached out, they've had a behavior support request, we've gone out, put some things in place, it's not being successful. We've moved to the next level of support on that, we're still not being successful. We've gone to ARD, we've looked at their BIP, we've done some different analysis, it's still not being successful. If we think, if they could come out with this really highly technical staff in a very concentrated, you know, environment for a maximum of, or minimum of 12 weeks, it wouldn't be forever, and we can give them the tools to be successful. So when we're talking about that, it is a, it is part of the continuum. It's a piece that we think's been missing for some kids. Because they're being disruptive on campus, they're not safe physically. That's one of our main things, is to make sure they're safe and that others are safe. So we're talking about a very small group of kids, so it's definitely not impeding the idea, we've tried every piece of least restrictive environment before we get there. And they have to go through a referral process, we have to go to ARD, we have to have our team come out and observe. And so it's not something that we take lightly at all.
And that's, and I know it's, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that you're doing that, and I know that, that some folks in the, in the special education space are gonna be very skeptical of this, because there's been that historic skepticism where I think we did, you know, 30 years ago, we did special education, I think, very poorly. And it was sort of go to the resource room.
Right.
And so maybe, but I feel like there's been, in the last few years, sort of a concern that maybe the pendulum had swung too far. And I know, I know as board members, this is not fair to the students who are encountering these difficulties and have to live with them on a daily basis, but we do hear from parents quite frequently, there's a student in my, and they don't know what the issue is, but they do know that there's a kid, that their kid comes home and complains about on a regular basis, and it's disrupting the rest of the, it's disrupting the educational environment for everyone else. And so there's that balance between our obligation and duty under federal law, state law, to serve special education students, but also recognizing that the least restrictive environment, sometimes there's a lot of other students present there that are also having to deal with the consequences of, of the disability or the behavioral issue. And so I'm, I'm very interested to see where this goes, because I do think that this is pretty new in the space. And just, I'm glad that we're, we're brave enough to try it, because I think the discussion has been such for so long and it, we've fallen back on, well, we can't, we can't, we can't. So kudos to y'all for being brave enough to try this, because I think it, it has some risks involved with it, and it's gonna, it is a mindset shift, which is what you started with at the beginning, but I'm glad that you're doing it. I did have one suggestion for your upcoming parent, meeting that I think that you're partnering with on council and related to that. Folks will come to us quite a bit not understanding how, you know, what rights students might have in the least restrictive environment and, and how sometimes that requires us to deal with, you know, behavioral issues, discipline issues differently for those students because of their disability. And I think there's just a real big lack of understanding in general population folks about that, because that is something that we get as complaints, is like, well, I know this behavior, this incident happened in my student's class, and yet the student was back, you know, and the, the parents have an expectation of what should have happened.
Sure.
And sometimes that, sometimes special education is not involved at all, but sometimes it is. And I think there's a particular lack of understanding of, well, why can't we just kick the kid out? It's, it's how some people will frame it. And as we know, there's a lot that goes on there, but I think it would be helpful if you could just give a very brief overview, because that is something that I think, I think your audience is probably gonna be primarily parents with special ed students, but to the extent that there's not, that might be helpful information to share.
Absolutely, and I think that's one of the things about partnering with PTAs, we're hoping we'll get some people in there that may be not special ed students. But also, some of the other things we were already talking about doing is a session on autism. What does it mean? What are some of the behaviors that come with it? Because, you know, that's a very popular topic out there. And it also is a wide range of behaviors that it presents in. And so how do we help educate parents along that? But I'll take your advice too and talk to the Partners Resource Network about, they might have something about behaviors.
Okay. Thank you. Really appreciate this.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you so much for the information. I, I don't remember, I think it was around 2015 when we made a pretty concerted effort regarding inclusion, and I remember being on the front lines of that. Somewhat what Mr. Chapa was talking about, but also on the, the other side of, I mean, families approaching us in tears of joy for their children. And in the general population, it took, it took leadership at the campus level to have the proper communication with the gen ed population, the, the parents and the students. And it, in some that were very difficult transitions turned into amazing positive wins. And that's what I would hope will continue. I just remember it was such a paradigm shift then, and, and all over the board, people are like, oh, what are you talking about? And why, why would, why, why, why board? Why are we doing this? So it, it's a wonderful thing to see the positive outcomes. The, this system of education, public education, Arlington ISD is so complex. And what you are doing with sped is that and then some, as far as complexities in all of the different situations. I'm, I'm so happy to hear the, the depth and the breadth of the offerings that we do have to help all students, because we're very intentional, all students is all students. And I just want to say, it's always been a difficult area. In my 15-year tenure on this board, every year there's something. And whether it's staffing or et cetera, et cetera, there's always issues, right? You, in one year, I think we really need to focus on the wins. I, I love that we have built a situation and relationship of trust between the board, the administration, staff. We are all in this together. And to look at how far things have come in a short time, is it exactly where you want it yet? No, but you're, you're blowing and going. It's wonderful. Thank you to everybody in sped. It's just phenomenal. One of the things that I've grown to appreciate in this district is if there is, if there's something happening, the district responds and responds well. And it might not be exactly what we want on the exact timeline, because life is life, things happen. But the, the owning of it is there, and you're, you're just, it's amazing in one year, and even like with HR, to have the response time more than cut in half, that's a win. It might be, yes, always continuous quality improvement. That's what we're all about.
Right.
So I just wanted to say thank you to you guys, to the district, for what, what you do to serve students well. And looking forward to future updates and wonderful things to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Dr. Brown, thank you and your team so very much. Thank you for your time and your expertise directed at our special ed students. They deserve everything and more, so thank you. Thank you for what you do. We appreciate it. Thank you. Now we come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have one registered speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. I will call Mr. David Jarvis. Welcome, Mr. Jarvis.
Good evening. May I continue? All right, very good. Thank you for, for hearing me. Today I received a level one decision letter from Mr. Mark Strand on a grievance that I had filed on a level one. I think there may have been some confusion or misunderstanding about my relief. As I stated in my filed grievance and at the hearing, I understand the only option for a hearing officer is to say grant or deny the grievance. And somehow or other, this turned into the, I wanted the board to intervene and tell the hearing officer what to do, grant or deny. That was never the case. I'm only asking this board to follow your own public complaint policy and instruct your hearing officers that dismissal of a grievance is not a lawful option per your own district policy. It's either grant or deny. And what happened with me and the reason I filed the grievance is because two, two grievances before that, hearing officers dismissed my grievance, which stopped me dead. I explained to Mr. Strand that I have a right to a hearing, as you know, under state law, the Education Code, section 11.1511, that I, and it required to give me a hearing before the board. Unless the hearing, unless the hearing officer denies my grievance, allowing me to appeal to the next level, level two, three, four, I can't get to the board, okay? And if you won't let me go to the board by dismissing my grievance, then you've denied my right to a hearing before this board. That's point number one. As I explained to Mr. Strand, I also cannot appeal the action of this board unless there is an order or decision by this board. Like back to my grievance that I filed with Mr. Strand, if he dismisses it, I can't get to level two, three, and four. And so therefore I can't appeal. So the hearing officer can deny the grievance. I agree with that, no doubt about it, no problem with that. What I object, what I'm not objecting to the denial, I, I want him to deny it and move it on to the next level. That's all I'm asking for. That is not happening. And I think I've told the board that, and you have failed to act on that. But by dismissing my two grievances, I'm being denied both my right to a hearing before this board, level four, and I'm also being denied my right to appeal the actions of the board to the Texas Commissioner of Education. I can't get there. I've tried to get there. I've told this board that this is what the Commissioner of Education says. You can't appeal anything unless it comes directly from the board. Well, you see, I'm in a box here. I can't get to the board because they're dismissing my grievances at a lower level. So to allow AISD hearing officers to dismiss grievances, in my judgment, is a lawless act, not authorized by your own complaint policy. You look at the policy, you know what it says. You either grant or deny. If it's denied, then you can appeal to the next level. It doesn't say anything in there at all about an option is to dismiss the grievance. So if the board doesn't intervene and rescind these dismissals, I'm gonna file a new grievance charging this board with a violation of state law and your own policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. Mr. Chapa?
I have a couple factual questions for Mr. Eichelbaum. Mr. Eichelbaum, again, non-agenda forum, but want to ask factual questions. Does the, does the board have authority to direct hearing officers on, to reach specific decisions?
No, the board writes policies.
Given, if there's a disposition of a grievance at, at any level, level one, level two, can that disposition be appealed regardless of what name might be given to the disposition?
Yes. What, what happens sometimes, though, is a grievance is dismissed as untimely.
Is that a?
He can appeal whether or not it was untimely, but he doesn't appeal, in that case, the substance, only the timeliness decision. If the board at some point says, no, it was timely, or some level says that, then what happens is it gets sent back to address the substance at that point, if there's a ruling that it was timely.
And has, and for the grievances that Mr. Jarvis referred to, has there been an appeal of the untimeliness determination?
I believe that was what was appealed. He actually grieved the fact that it was dismissed, is my understanding. If it's the one, I apologize, there are more than a dozen grievances out there, and I'm not sure exactly which one he was referring to this time. But I do know that he has had one dismissed as being either untimely or being a duplicate of a previous grievance and already ruled upon, and he was permitted to appeal that, which I believe is what he did.
But that hasn't been appealed to the board?
No. You will recall, though, there was one that was appealed to the board, actually four, that he didn't appeal to the Commissioner of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Dr, uh, Ms. Eichelbaum.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Thank you, Ms. Eichelbaum. It's now time for our superintendent's report. Dr. Spahn?
President Fowler, members of the board, I'm happy to share some exciting information that's happened in Arlington ISD in the past couple of weeks. I don't know, I, I feel like I've been here a long time already, but it's only been a few days, so I'm excited to be here and appreciate this board of trustees. Like everyone, I know that this board will be watching the Super Bowl coming up in Arlington ISD. This is gonna sound a little strange, but I think we should probably be rooting for the 49ers this year. I know we're in Dallas country, but I think we, we probably ought to focus on that. That's because two 49ers are Arlington ISD products. Rookie tight end Braden Ellis is a Martin graduate, and assistant coach Andrew Hades Stoker graduated from Lamar in 1997. This marks the third straight year that Arlington ISD products have made it onto the Super Bowl rosters. It also is the third straight year for Lamar to have a former player connected to the Super Bowl. I have never heard of that. That is phenomenal, for three years in a row to have a, a high school connected to the Super Bowl. I know we're in Cowboys country, and it sounds a little strange, but I think we ought to be rooting for the 49ers this year. In Arlington ISD, we talk all the time about how outstanding the fine arts programs are in this district, and I've been able to see that firsthand in my short time here. We got further proof of that this week as the Corey Cubs chorus is one of three elementary groups selected to perform at Texas Music Educators Association Convention in San Antonio. Of course, getting love from TMEA is nothing new for the district. We recently had seven students earn TMEA honors, all state music honors. Those honors are reserved for musicians in a top 3% in the state. The seven students are also in San Antonio performing this week. And while I'm talking about outstanding students, I think it's important for us to, to highlight Austin High senior Brooklyn Sinclair. Brooklyn was one of our students who showed animals at the Fort Worth Stock Show. Not only did Brooklyn show her steer Not only did Brooklyn show her steer named Kerosene, but she was also one of the 270 students whose steer earned, was earned a spot in the auction. Kerosene sold for $47,500 and all of that money goes to Brooklyn. She was just one of three Tarrant County students to make it to the auction and the first ever from our district, which is pretty spectacular. I think, I think this next part is even more amazing. Brooklyn's put in all of this work since being diagnosed with Hodgkin's lymphoma. She is continuing to fight a good fight with support from her parents, family, friends, and her main focus continues to be on her animals. Way to go, Brooklyn.
Yes.
She deserves a round of applause again.
Yes.
And best of luck moving forward. We'll be here as support for you as well. Last Friday, I was able to watch some of our top spellers compete in the Area Seven and Area Eight spelling bees right here in the boardroom. I was an English major and I could not spell a lot of those words. It was fascinating to watch our abilities of all 61 students who qualified for the bees. I want to congratulate all of them and wish them the best of luck into Wimby, into Wimbush's, excuse me, Wimbush World Language Academy's Morgan Garner and Ditto Elementary's Will Farnell, who, at the regional spelling bee at TCU. Those two students were our area winners. Finally, I want to take a minute to make sure I thank our counselors this week. We know that it's National School Counseling Week. We heard some evidence of their impact on our students earlier this evening. And the work that's happening with school counselors all across our school district and across our state is nothing short of amazing. So a huge shout out to the school counselors in AISD who are doing great things for kids every day. Wanted to say real quickly, too, I appreciate you all as trustees, thankful to be here. And that concludes my superintendent report for this week.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Do we have any trustees with reports? All right, then I'll take the liberty. This is Black History Month, and as a school board president, I am honored to take a moment to acknowledge and celebrate Black History Month. This is a time for us to reflect on the significant contributions and achievements of African-Americans, not only in our nation's history, but also in local communities. Black History Month is a reminder that our schools and society are responsible for teaching and learning about the rich history and culture of African-Americans. It's essential that we continue to uplift and celebrate the stories, experiences, and contributions of Black people, past and present. As we celebrate Black History Month, let us commit to creating safe and inclusive learning environments for all students. We must continue to address and dismantle systematic racism, implicit biases, and discrimination within our schools and communities. Let us also recognize and celebrate the achievements of Black educators, administrators, and staff members who have made significant contributions to our schools and our district. Their leadership, dedication, and hard work have positively impacted the lives of countless students and families. We are delighted to announce that we have a special guest presentation coming up on February 16th at Sam Houston High School. Opal Lee, the Opal Lee, the grandmother of Juneteenth, will share her experiences for all of us to learn from. I hope you will join us at 6:00 PM. Tickets are $3. And you can learn more and register at AISD.net or pay at the door if any seats are available. In closing, I encourage you to take the time to learn about and celebrate Black History Month. Let us use this month as an opportunity to deepen our understanding and appreciation of Black history and culture and to commit to creating more equitable and inclusive schools and communities for all. Thank you. One more bit. I want to give a shout out to Shannon Porter. She's the executive director of River Legacy Park and Lamar High School teacher, environmental club sponsor, Mr. Jesse Allen, for the incredible work they're doing at Lamar High Outdoor Garden. I was invited to campus on Wednesday to see the beginnings of what is going to be an incredible garden in their courtyard on the Lamar campus. I want to give an extra shout out to Mr. Allen. He is brand new to Lamar this year and he is already the sponsor of the Environmental Club there at Lamar. Thank you to River Legacy. Thank you to Mr. Allen and his students, along with the City of Arlington Parks and Recreation for helping us get this project going. Thank you so much. And with that, it is 10:57 and we are adjourned.